Madam Speaker, do we have any, Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on closed session?
No, sir.
Thank you very kindly, we stand reset in closed session at 1:00.
Evening, we're reajourning the Menifee City Council meeting from closed session of earlier, and we have no closed session report except to say that we received a brief from council as to the outcome of the Walmart case, excuse me, Mitsak v. the City of Menifee, which does involve the Walmart property down on Hawn and Scott Road, and at this juncture that frees up the economic development team of the City of Menifee to reengage with Walmart and to proceed with a project with them at some juncture. So, with that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have an invocation this evening by Pastor Ryan Sharp of Generations Church.
(inaudible) thank you for an opportunity to come together, I want to look at some difficult issues and some things that our city is badly in need of, but also to rejoice at the many things that you have been doing and will continue to do through this leadership group and so many of the community, but ultimately we pause to reflect also on the fact that you-
Are sovereign, and Lord, we thank you for that, that we can trust you and your control over the fairs of man, and today, as we pause and remember that, I pray that it will bring a tremendous sense of peace through all the different things and topics talked about today. So be with our leaders, thank you for them, we continue to lift up them in prayer and intercede for them, and be with our community members today, I mean, we work through everything clearly, succinctly, into your glory. We thank you for being here, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ryan. Councilmember Denver, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this point, we have a Public Works project update. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, has a brief Public Works update, project update for you. As you know, we have a myriad of projects going, not just including the CIP that council approved for this first year, the capital improvement program, and Mr. Smith's going to catch us up on some other items that Public Works has been working on.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It's my pleasure to bring an update to you and some of the projects that the Public Works Department is working on. Your clicker's not working. Could you help me this? All right, you jumped to, on there. Perfect, perfect. First project is Leon Road Improvement Project, it's currently under construction, and it's anticipated to be completed by August 30th, with the road being open by August 5th.
That's a county project, yes?
It's a joint project between the county and the city. Part of it is in the city, and the city has provided funds to the county for the portion within the city.
Who's the project lead?
The county is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. Of course, everybody knows about the Newport Road widening now. The project is underway, scheduled to get started, shovels on the ground, first week of August. Tomorrow, we have a pre-construction meeting with the construction group, which will include the construction manager, our team, to kick off the procedures for managing the project through construction.
That's added lanes, right there?
That's correct.
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for the record. So, we're widening Newport, we're adding, how many lanes? Two?
We're adding two lanes, one lane in each direction, along with traffic signal improvements and an additional left turn lane.
Thank you.
Next project is the Missing Link Project. That is scheduled to get underway with equipment on the ground July 24th, so look out for dust in that area. And that, as everyone knows, that is scheduled to be completed by the end of the year. Okay, next project. Project, sidewalk project that is currently underway, it's under construction, is the McCall Boulevard Sidewalk Improvement Project, that is right at Sherman and McCall, and that is anticipated to be completed by the end of this month. Murieta, Murieta Road and Holland Road Right Turn Pockets, we're currently in design on that project, and we're going through the environmental process, and that's to add a right turn lane onto Holland, onto Murieta from Holland as well. So, I will be bringing additional information for the anticipated start date of that construction. Standing within the same area, Holland Road, Anna Lane, currently staff is evaluating the intersection of Anna Lane and Holland Road to determine what improvements could be enacted to improve the site distance at that intersection. There are a couple alternatives that we're looking at, and we should be able to finish that up here shortly. The goal is to have any improvements done in that area before school begins. Last but certainly not least is the Sun City Freeway signs that we've been talking about. Staff continues to discuss the installation of the Sun City signs on the I-215. Currently, Caltrans is evaluating the standard green and white sign that would have the text that we finally would like on that sign. As a backup, if they do not approve that type of a sign, we will be looking at asking for historic marker for the area. That's another option.
Councilmember August?
Well, I want to thank you, Jonathan, for continuing to work on this, and we've been discussing this for several weeks about the sign for Sun City. I think you probably already said this to the people out there, but this is just an example. I'm going to ask the mayor for consensus from the council to direct, continue to direct staff to continue to work in this effort to eventually get to this sign, and we can work on the text in with Caltrans as we continue to do it. So, Mr. Mayor, would you ask for a consensus from the council?
Yes, of course. Is there any objection? It's ordered.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. That ends my update. If there are any questions, I can answer those.
Questions from the council?
I have one question with respect to this slide right here. I maybe misunderstood your previous discussion from the July 2nd meeting, but I thought that we were proceeding with the brown historic sign and not going with the green and white sign at the very beginning. That's what I thought the, that's what I thought we were doing, so.
I apologize for any misunderstanding on that topic. We initially applied to install the standard color sign, and this is, the historic marker is our backup sign. If we determine that we want to move forward with this type of a sign, we can, we can do that, assuming that Caltrans gives us that approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. August?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and speaking with the people in the community and a few of my consents regarding this sign, I think in order to expedite and create a little less work and trouble for the city, I do believe a sign of this nature would be acceptable to the people.
The brown historic-
The brown historic sign.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any thing to add to the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Smith, under his leadership has, the good news is that we have options, or we didn't think we had options before, and we're told we didn't have options. And it's because of Jonathan Smith and his diligence in going through Caltrans and making sure that there were proper signs. So, last council meeting, we kind of talked about some options that we have. We think this might be the quickest, most effective way to, to not only add a description to the area, but get the signage back on the freeway in a way that it's really focused on getting folks off at McCall to go to the Sun City area, and I think if we combined it with a, with a street sign or a green sign, it might get overlooked. So, we just want to make sure the consensus of the council is to go in this direction, which would be, we think, far more dramatic on the freeway and really call attention to the fact that that is Sun City and where to get off the freeway.
I tend to agree. Is there any objection from the council to go with the historic sign? Hearing none, then that's the prime objective.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Then we have, Madam Clerk, what's the next agenda? Looks like approval of the minutes of July 2nd.
Yes, sir.
And, okay, so, we just make, need to make sure that since Mr. Denver was not here, that he can't vote on this particular item, so are there any additions to the minutes of July 2nd? Hearing none, the minutes are ordered. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda modifications at this point?
Yes, Your Honor. We have a few. First is item 12.1, we will be asking council to have that pulled for this evening. It will be rescheduled to a workshop. That date is being set now, and it is looking like it can be June, pardon me, July 30th. Item 12.2 is being removed from the agenda for consideration at a later date. And item 12.7 is being removed by the individual who would be reporting, as he feels he needs a little extra time on his appointment, so that item will be rescheduled for a later date as well.
Okay, thank you very kindly. Are there any, 12, 12.7, 12.1, 12.2, 12.7?
Yeah, you did. Did she mention, did she mention we're not going to nominate a candidate tonight? Okay.
Are there any objections to the modifications of the agenda? Agenda is modified. Onto public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public commenters this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. Red Sullivan?
Good evening, council, staff, and people in the audience. I am Carol Red Sullivan, President of Menifee Sun City Concern, and I wanted to invite all of you to come to a presentation that we're having on July 25th. Salk Institute has contacted us and wanted to come up and give a presentation, and they're going to give a presentation on neurological development using human stem cells to develop and treat brain diseases such as autism, schizophrenia, and Parkinson's disease. It'll be at 2 o'clock on Wednesday, on Thursday, the 25th, at the Sun City Civic Association North Town Hall. Seating is limited, so if people can call, that's fine. We are hoping to have a good appearance. If this one turns out very well, I have a couple of other biotechs that want to come up and do the same thing for Menifee Sun City Concern. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Sue Christensen.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, citizens. I have two comments tonight. One is to talk about the first fundraiser for the Menifee Valley Boys and Girls Club. That is coming up on July 26th at 6 o'clock at the Lake Elsinore Casino. I sent an email forward to you guys to encourage you to participate. It's going to be a really fun evening. It's a $60 buy-in. The mayor has already committed to come, and we're looking forward to checking out his poker skills. You, too?
I sent you an email.
Okay. We'll talk. Okay, good. So I encourage you all to participate. I'm going to leave a couple flyers out there just for this evening, so people can check it out. My phone number's on here if you want to participate. I need to know early enough so that I can let the casino know how many dealers to bring in for the tournament, so trying to get it going. We have a couple of updates, but I'll do that another time. The second comment that I have is toward Mr. August specifically. You recently made a decision that could have been considered a controversial one, and I just kind of felt compelled to come and say to you, as the only person in this room, city, who's been in the exact position that you were in, your decision means nothing to me of relevance, but I want to congratulate you on your courage of convictions in making a very difficult decision that would put you in the line of fire, because I know that you're going to get some backlash from that, but I applaud you for having done what you believe is right for the city. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Katie Benir.
As everyone knows, I've been here three years, speaking up, wondering, am I doing the right thing? Why am I here speaking up when I know I can't make honest people out of dishonest people? Then, the other day, out of the blue, as I questioned all of this, I received a letter, so I'm going to read it tonight. Please know that many of us were very disappointed to hear Deputy Mayor Wallace Edgerton use his power and position to insult you personally by name after you had left the room at the July 2nd council meeting. This sort of bully pulpit activity is simply unacceptable. Do you agree? Well, I definitely agree. I wasn't here to hear it, but I did listen to the tapes, and I don't appreciate it. I'm here doing a civic duty, what I think is right, more than some people are doing what they think and know is right. Says, "I am part of the group who supported his recent opponent in this election. We had hoped to have a more respectful gentleman representing our district listening to our concerns. If Mr. Edgerton and his cohorts continue this rudeness, be assured that you are supported by your fellow residents, many of us who are paying attention by viewing the meetings online via the City of Menifee website. Keep them accountable for their actions, Mrs. Benir, and that's what I plan to do as long as I live in this city." I don't know who this lady was, I don't know her, have no idea, there's no return address, I just know, when I got it, I knew what I'm doing is the right thing, and I plan to keep speaking. On another note, I would like to start, to say thank you to all the volunteers that worked countless hours and days to find a missing child, and especially to the owners of the market where the staging area was set up. I know it disrupted their business, they didn't have to give a thought to what they were going to do, they just kept doing that. They're kind and considerate people. I don't know them either, but I have the greatest respect for them. I do have to ask where our city council was during the intense search, as there was just one of them out there. Thank you, Mr. Furman, for all you did, near many hours you put in, and some scorching days, under hot conditions, trying times. Your maps were a valuable asset in this endeavor, and I didn't see the city set up, step up to provide such information. Then, Mr. Mann, I have to ask, where were you? I'm an old lady, I was out there in boots, I was tramping through brush, I was searching, I was in the hot heat. I'm not asking for any thank yous, I'm not asking for any applause for doing what was right, but then to see your face in front of the camera, under a shade, was more than I could take, was really more than I could take. You are just a city council member, the same as everybody else that sits up there. The fact that you have that title, mayor, doesn't mean squat. You are a council member. You've let the power and the authority of that seat and that title, mayor, go to your head. You are controlling people, you are telling them what to do, and you need to stop and make some changes.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Ernest Henson.
To the mayor, council members, and all of those that do honor. My name is Ernest Henson, I live at 28177 Pebble Beach Drive, Sun City, California. I think it would be a good idea for you to inform your street board operator to the correct time that the city council meeting commences. I called last week, and I was told that it started at 7:30, and I got here at 7:15, I was in here, I got here when the public comment was, started. And one other thing, it would be a good idea if you tell the street board operator what time the meeting starts, because it confuses the public. One other thing is that you, last week, you decide, or two weeks ago, you decided to change the meeting from Tuesday to Wednesday, and it would be a good idea if you let the public know that, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we'll, we'll correct that deficiency, sir. Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
Yes, sir. Betty Spatafora.
Good evening. This is Kathy Pickett, and I'm Betty Spatafora from Arts Council Menifee. We want to thank you for allowing us to partner with the city for the First Summer Youth Art Institute. The program was a success. Students, parents, principals, district administrators, school board members, all praised the program. Our program is exactly what the CDBG is all about. The local CDBG agency, the City of Menifee, partnering with the local nonprofit Arts Council Menifee to fill a void. In this case, the void was the lack of art instruction due to school budget cuts. Over 450 family members and friends attended the Quail Valley Art Ceremony. Thank you, Council Furman, for attending. When it was announced that we would return next year, the entire room roared with applause. Approximately 400 children from Quail Valley and Romaland Schools received art instruction free and took home materials to continue practicing over the summer in a bright blue bag. They also stored their art supplies in the bag with the artwork that they had produced during the week. The art classes were taught by professional art teachers and assisted by Arts Council Menifee arts volunteers, such as the lady next to me, high school students, and local school volunteers. As a matter of fact, one of the high school volunteers has a great desire to go to art school, and she made close friends with a teacher that she was working with, and the teacher discovered that she was lacking in quality grades, and she has inspired this high school student to return this fall and get her grades in better shape so that she'll be able to attend art school. We also had a group of special education students and their assistants, and much to everyone's surprise, including their teachers, they did extremely well. Thank you for partnering with us for the 2013 Summer Youth Art Institute, and we look forward to partnering with you next year. The students and teachers produced these beautiful thank you cards, and we're going to give them to the clerk so that you can look at them at a later time. And I believe Kathy also has a couple of beautiful pieces of the artwork, so you can see what the children produced. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your effort, and I think that we can probably post those in the lobby for a display for a while?
Absolutely, Your Honor.
Congrats, thank you. All right, very good. Are there any more public commenters?
Not during this portion of the agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Updates and Comments, Councilmember August.
May I be allowed to just make a simple statement, and it might be in a statement that's kind of appropriate because of a remark that we heard tonight, and I'd like to correct the record, it'll only take a minute.
Please proceed, it's your time.
We should all be proud of the mayor. My sentiments are shared by the entire council and staff. Mr. Mann did a terrific job in representing the City of Menifee during last week's traumatic change, chain of events. Any criticism of the mayor of the city would be unfair and not justified. The gratitude and the praise he and the city received from the public was overwhelming. The mayor was at the Operations Center every morning, and for every press conference in the afternoon. I was on the phone with him hourly, as he was keeping up to date with the changing circumstances and difficult situations as they occurred. He was in the loop continuously and on a minute's call to offer any assistance asked for from the city. I was proud to stand behind him as he represented the city daily in front of the media. Tom Furman throughout was at his absolute best during the search phase, and even better, after the search was called off, as he consoled and prayed with neighbors and friends. Tom, nobody does that better than you. Deputy Mayor Edgerton offered his support in spending time in the Operations Center and the Volunteer Center against doctor's orders. I didn't know I was supposed to check in with Ms. Benir, but since she's here now, I'll let her know that I volunteered and went out on a search team as well. I'm sorry she didn't see me. I can report that I did not see Ms. Benir when I was there, but that would lead me to suggest, that would not lead me to suggest that she wasn't. I hope we don't have to go through anything like this again as a city, but if we do, I think we've learned we're up to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. August. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Just a couple of comments. Katie, I think it was just the previous week that I complimented you on your involvement as an activist. I'll just look through the minutes, I don't recall what you're talking about, and you read the tape, I guess I didn't, but I wouldn't have been bullying you, might have been something lighthearted I said, but I'm sorry, I certainly regret if you feel that way, that wouldn't have been my intent. In any event, I just wanted to echo Councilman August's comments, you know, we've, we've got a constitution, and when you want to put a face on America, you have the president speak for America, and when you want to put a face on the state, you ask the governor to step out. And when you have a city, what is appropriate is for the mayor to step out. In this situation, where we had this lost boy, it was just not a local event, it was not a regional event, it was a national event. In fact, on the news in certain circumstances, it was an international event. So, people said, well, where is Menifee? And the mayor would have been remiss had he not stepped out. And I go along with Councilman August in congratulating him, I thought he did a great job of representing our city, and that's what he was supposed to be doing, was to get out there. And lastly, while what happened here in Menifee was not unique, it was certainly rare. When you have all of a sudden this outpouring from people, not just from your city, but from all around, I talked to one lady, I went to one event, and I asked the lady from Hemet why she was there, and she said, "I'm a grandmother." She said, "I have grandchildren in that age, and I heard other people say, you know, he's not my, he's, I didn't give birth to him, but he's my child," that sort of thing. It was, it was, it was a wonderful upbeat kind of thing out of a tragedy. It was so sad, the ending, but when you found everybody coming together, and of course, so many people to compliment on this council, obviously Tom Furman did so much work, he should have been complimented. I know Chris Thomas didn't have a horse, and that's what he usually rides, so he got out there on foot, and on and on and on. Rob Johnson, our city manager, was either on the email or on the phone, seemed like 24/7, but was so, what was so amazing was this outpouring of Republicans, Democrats, independents, that this, this was just a, an explosion of volunteers, of humans showing their better side. It was a beautiful event, that's what we should concentrate on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton.
Not many of you people know that my son was killed 27 years ago, at the age of 16 years old, and this, this was probably the hardest thing I ever did, because I felt deeper and more for these people than, than anything- because I felt deeper and more for these people than, than anything. And it was, it was tough on me mentally. I couldn't speak to a lot of people because I became a babbling idiot. I had, you know, so much feeling for these people. But there's been enough said. The, the help that Ron, Rob Johnson helped with me. Anytime I was on the phone, he got whatever I needed, and I want to thank him for that. And I feel for everybody. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Denver.
As you know, I wasn't in town. As a matter of fact, I was on a boat in a harbor in Ireland, and some people from Moreno Valley came up to me, we were at breakfast, and started giving me sympathy for this event and brought up paper. Oddly enough, handed me a copy of 24/7, some paperwork from 24/7, and we then went into it, and a number of people on the boat discussed this whole issue in Ireland, so it certainly was an international event, and we're very proud of your comments, Mayor.
Thank you, John. I thank my caller, I thank you gentlemen very much. This whole city stepped up to the plate in a big, big way. For those who may have questioned whether or not we were ready to address an issue such as this, whether it be a missing child, or a flood, or an earthquake, or something such as that, everybody did what they were supposed to do, as they were trained to do under the incident command system, which we're required to implement in accordance with the Federal Emergency Management Act. And the compassion that the city staff shared and showed, and the council members who were involved, it was amazing. And the outpouring of support from the community was equally impressive. And, and you know that I've, I'm on record in the, in the press as, as giving thanks, so I'll just say humbly one more time, thank you to everybody involved. You really did Menifee proud for all of your efforts. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to speak to the Friends of the Sun City Library today, which is a great update. I hadn't been there in a couple months, and it was a great invitation. And I also had the opportunity this morning to address the Pachanga Tribal Council on several issues that are of importance to both the city and the Pachanga tribe, and I look forward to working with them on many issues affecting not only matters of cultural significance, but also of economic development. So I just wanted to share that with you. So much so that I know, Tom, Councilmember Furman, the Pachanga tribe chairman, Macaro, offered one of the great oak saplings as a gesture of goodwill to the city in honor of, in memory of Terry Dwayne Smith Jr. at a dedication ceremony to be held in the future. So I said, yes, we graciously accept that offer on behalf of the tribe, on behalf of the city council, and so we'll take that tree and we will do what we need to do with it, with the organizers of those events. Okay? Very good. Are there any other councilmember comments? Hearing none, we're on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
Yes, sir. Katie Minier.
Please proceed.
Actually, Scott, after you saying that about the tree, I, something just came to my mind, and I wanted to throw something out there. Possibly, I know they talked about a mural up at the market. What if the tree were planted there and a plaque? Might be just, just a thought. I'm just throwing that out there because...
I think that's an idea that we should consider. Yeah, great idea.
Okay. Then I had a question about ordinance 10.5. I don't recall that being discussed. I want to know how this is being voted on when it was never up for discussion. It appears to be crafted by Ms. Biggs and Scott Mann without any public input, or without any review of the planning commissioner city council. I think this ordinance would have brought out a loud cry from the people in Sun City who, most of them do have carports and probably all new homes that'd be built there or put in, or mobiles or anything, would have a carport. That seems to be just part of what you have for a house, or a mobile, or whatever they put in, is to have a carport. So why are we now asking to have these permitted? If I'm understanding that ordinance right, it has to do with permitting carports and the likes. And of course, a lot of people have RVs that they park under those big canopies, and that would affect them as well, I believe. Just a question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
All right. City Attorney, could you make a, could you provide a brief response?
Sure. Just to note that the detached accessory building ordinance went before the planning commission in its current form four times. There were hearings. It was brought before the council in June when it was a deadlock. There was, one council member was missing, so it was voted on, well, it wasn't even voted on. Then it came back, and it was in fact voted on, and this is now second reading. All of that's been done in public.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, are there any modifications to the consent calendar? Mr. Denver.
I would like to pull 10.5 for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Furman.
He beat me to the punch.
Okay. Are there any other modifications? May I have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar, please?
It's approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Denver, you, you have the floor for 10.5.
Thank you. I'm not going to go into great depth. I disagree with the bunker ordinance. I still would think that it's detrimental to our town. I disagree with some of the things that are in this ordinance, and so I intend to vote no, but that's my discussion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Furman.
I, I'm kind of torn on a bunch of subjects here, and I have been searching for a reason why the agricultural registration was abandoned. Now I find out through research on, reading these two ordinances and comparing them with the previous ordinance that was passed in 2010, the items on the, that were approved under the agricultural building registration somehow got written into the accessory building ordinance and slipped by council on January 15, 2010, thus eliminating the use of the agricultural registration fee. Now, I don't know how it slipped by or who wrote it, wrote it in, but it had to be somebody on staff, I would think. Now, there's structures that would fall into the category of the agricultural registration that would be $30 are now under the accessory building requirements with, up to, up to $500. Now, the, I made some comments to the city manager at the previous meeting, and he was gonna, he and I are gonna look into this. But we, we aren't a kind of a legal quandary here because these changes are also incorporated into this ordinance. So if we pass the bunker ordinances, we are agreeing that the items that were on agricultural registration have been transferred to accessory structures. Now, I don't know how to get them back. I, I can't get any legal advice other than to modify this and, and not vote on it tonight and bring it back. We need a red line copy of where the changes were made. There's, there's kind of too much up in the air, and I, I need actually direction from council on where do we go from here?
Okay. So at this juncture, we have, we have a polled agenda item. City Attorney, can you address any of the concerns of Councilmember Furman with respect to a change to an ordinance from January 10 of 2010 that I have no idea what that's about? I certainly didn't vote on something such as that.
Yes, you did. You voted on it.
Maybe I did, maybe I didn't. But could you address, I mean, if there's, if there's issues associated with this ordinance, whether it's with the detached facilities above ground, or detached facilities below ground, is there an opportunity for us to bring it back another day? Not, not tonight, but I mean, pass it tonight and, and peek and tweak and massage and make whatever other administrative changes down the road that, to address Councilmember Furman's concerns potentially?
Okay. The ordinance in its present form, as I said, it has been being processed for some time. And there are various iterations of that that did include red line versions. The one this evening doesn't because it's a second reading and, you know, whatever. If you want to make a change to it this evening, then you have to basically start over. And that, that of course is the issue. You would have to make the, agree upon the changes, send it back, and reprocess it as an ordinance. You could probably avoid going to the planning commission because you can just modify what the planning commission did, but you would have to start the public hearing process over. So that's one option if it were to be denied this evening. It is not possible to just make the change this evening because this has gone through first reading. You can, in the alternative, adopt it this evening and direct staff to come back with a proposal to remove or to change the provisions that Councilmember Furman has requested, and do that as a separate action. It would take effect later because the change would have to go through the same process and be processed through the planning commission as well. So it would be a delay on those changes, but you could in fact approve the, the ordinance as to bunkers this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Furman.
I have possibly one suggestion that might work. Could we agree to a set of conditions for the agricultural fee registration that would simultaneously pull some of the stuff off the accessory structure ordinance and bring it under the privy of agricultural registration?
You could do that, but it would have to be through a later action. Couldn't be done this evening.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the difficulty.
All right. Could, could I have a support on that from, from a councilman? Could we go that route? And we could approve this motion?
I'm sorry. Help me out here. I'd like some clarification on what you want, Tom. See if it conflicts with anything that we're doing.
Okay. There's, there's a set of parameters that the county has always used for agricultural registration of a building. And it basically involves a building that is open on two, three, or four sides, is used for storage of farm equipment, agriculture equipment, and livestock. And the building can't be used for any type of employment. Now, those are the parameters that the city of Riverside has gone by all this time, the county of Riverside. Now, somehow, those, those regulations have been abandoned by this city, and I just researched it and found how it was abandoned because they, those items, under those qualifications, were put into the accessory building structure, and the agricultural registration was abandoned. So my suggestion is, I don't want to abandon the agricultural registration, and I want to reestablish the rules that were in place when we formed a city, okay, that have just somehow just got abandoned.
If, Julie, can we pass this tonight? Did I understand you correctly? Can we pass this tonight and bring Councilman Furman's concerns back at a subsequent meeting and address them? And indeed, if necessary, even modify the ordinance we passed tonight to incorporate some of his concerns?
Yes, yes, you certainly could do that. And the value to doing that is you can get a better history from the planning department as to what really is going on here. This only came up a couple of hours ago, so...
So, so, Mr. Furman, I would hope...
Yeah, well, sometimes at the 11 o'clock hour, that's when you catch something.
Right, right.
And when, when, when I caught the ordinance that you and Mr. Mayor and Fred Twiman signed in 2010, that's when it happened. It was written into that ordinance and nobody caught it.
What date was that? By, by Councilman Mann?
Mm-hmm. I have a copy of it right here.
How could you do that, Scott?
I couldn't tell you. Was it a unanimous vote?
No, it was, yeah, it was, the four you voted, there was somebody absent.
Oh, okay, so it was unanimous. Well, you know what? I'm absolutely amenable to bringing this back if we go ahead and proceed. I find it a little bit, I'm sorry, sir, but, you know...
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know things happen at the 11th hour, but not after four planning commissions and two council meetings. So...
Right.
May I have a motion on adopting a second reading of this ordinance for tonight?
I'll, I'll make the motion with the understanding that we're bringing Councilman Furman's concerns back at a later date for a public review.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
No.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very well. On to agenda item 11.1, public hearings.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Ordinance number 13128 regulating mobile marijuana dispensaries and adding chapter 5.60 to the Menifee municipal code. Is there a staff report, please?
There is. We are just about to put it on screen. As you may be aware, there is a history in the state of California with regard to marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries. The Compassionate Care Act was passed in 1996, and it permits possession and use of marijuana by seriously ill persons under specified circumstances. The Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Program Act implemented that procedure and provides statutory guidance permitting cities to enact rules and regulations. The, contrary to the state of California, the federal government and the courts have held that federal law continues to make possession, distribution, use of marijuana a criminal act, and does not allow any exception for medical purposes. So this somewhat confusing body of law has been dealt with in California. And at this point, where we are, is that the city of Menifee has in, in effect, a ban on medical marijuana dispensaries in every zone in the city. That's chapter 5.50.02 and 01 of the Menifee municipal code. That provision is modeled on the law that was enacted by the city of Riverside. The city of Riverside was challenged legally on that language, and in May of this year, the court upheld, the Supreme Court of California upheld the ordinance that was adopted in Riverside, therefore validating that and also validating the Menifee ordinance. Since that ruling, there have been continuing challenges, and there continue to be those who would like to circumvent the court's ruling on this. The primary issue has been delivery services that deliver marijuana to homes and potentially to businesses within the city, but are not actually located within the city. They are constantly moving and difficult therefore to regulate. The attempt to limit mobile units that has gone forward, has been gone forward primarily by the city of Riverside, which of course was the lead on the, on the stationary distribution systems. There are websites that advertise access. You call and the product is delivered, and it's estimated that there are at least 50 or more within 30 miles of the city of Menifee making it easily accessible locally. The problems with... The problems with the mobile marijuana dispensaries are, it's not necessarily the, the product or the fact that ill people are able to receive it, but that there are regular muggings and robberies and crimes committed against just delivery people, against the vans that carry this stuff. And there's a listing here of several that have happened with the dates. It seems to be recurrent, and it seems to be that when you allow mobile delivery services in a community, it generates this kind of crime. Therefore, the adverse impacts, given the history, is contrary to the better interest in, of the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents. And Riverside has taken the lead as indicated. And Menifee now has the opportunity to do that. We have shamelessly lifted the language that Riverside has adopted in this regard. One of the things that lawyers do is, when you see somebody's excellent work, you pick it up and you take it and you put it into effect so that it saves your client money. And that's what we've done here. The, what is not prohibited, and I think this should be stressed, is legal licensed operations under the Health and Safety Code are not prohibited in Menifee. They're not prohibited whether they're stationary or mobile, but they must be state licensed. That includes clinics, healthcare facilities, residential care facilities for persons with life-threatening illnesses, residential or home care, health agencies, and hospices, as long as they strictly comply with the regulations. So we have done nothing to affect those, and the same with residence, residential care facilities for the elderly. There, those operations, when they are legal under the statutory code, are still legal here. The recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, assuming, and I don't know if I have the correct number there. It was a B in my thing. I think it's 128.
Yes.
It looked like a B to me.
Yes, and a B first.
What? Oh, yes, okay. Well, we're recommending adoption, and this would be the first reading of the ordinance. So, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam Attorney Counsel. Do you have any questions of staff? Questions of staff only. Mr. August?
Madam Counsel, the ordinance would prohibit the use of mobile marijuana dispensaries in the city of Menifee, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Uh, Mr. Denver, you're up.
Did I hear you say that the, what we're now, we already have, you can't put a, a stationary sales place. Now, if you bring in, as they do regularly, bring it in in trucks for the people of Menifee who have correct licensure theoretically to get it, we're now making those trucks illegal unless they're going to those places that you mentioned?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
I just want to address 5.60.030, which is basically the delivery by a outside source. Okay? Now, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a scenario at a, a legal standpoint, okay? If you have a, a person that has a 215 card, orders online, and a person pulls into his driveway, walks up to his house, hands him his stuff where he can goes inside his house, comes back, gets in his driveway and leaves. At what point can that person be arrested?
When he crosses the boundary into the city.
Okay. Can, can a police, can you stop a person for suspicion of delivering?
If there's reasonable grounds to do so.
Okay. So if, if he's in an unmarked car, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing some scenarios out that's gonna happen, you know? I mean, an unmarked car is gonna, you know, show up at somebody's house and, and come out. How do you make the arrest of that person?
Well, obviously, the police would have to have probable cause.
Right.
Which might mean that they've seen an operation or something.
They would have to, they have to spend time investigating or the.
That's correct.
The best way would be to set up a sting operation?
Possibly.
Okay. Okay, that's.
Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna open the public hearing at time 7:59. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed? And have we received any additional correspondence on this item?
This was legally noticed. We have not received further correspondence on this item.
Thank you. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Kathleen Zama-Deromey, thank you.
My name is Kathleen Zama-Deromey. I am a retired pediatric oncology RN. I am also a medical cannabis patient and activist. I personally cannot take pharmaceuticals. It put me into four organ failure about 10 years ago. I have to balance my health. I'm not feeling very well tonight, but it was important for me to come out. I've heard your compassion today when you spoke of matters earlier. I am asking you, do not make your people go back to illegal things. Do not put the people. There is an ordinance, Ms. Briggs, in the House of Representatives right now. It's H.R. 1523. And I am personally trying to get my, my member of house, Ken Calvert, to support this bill. It was put in by the Huntington Beach House of Representatives. And what it says is simply that in states where there has been a decision by the people, that those people will not be put in the middle. I go to court and I see sick people going to jail because of this. And I don't want your people put in that situation. I'm sorry that I'm emotional about this. But when you see 70 and 80-year-old people that are sick and in need of this, please don't make them not be able to have some, some way to get this medicine. You have already closed down any use of dispensaries. This was a compassionate bill for people who are very ill. Those people need some form of regulation, not a ban. Please, I see your compassion. I have been in your influence. I have, I, I first came to this area 20-some years ago and, and loved it. I live up in the hills by, uh, 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 just up in New Wabo. And I, I just want you to consider, please, the people in your city who could not come tonight because of their illness. These are the people that I worry about. Please, please don't ban them. Please, look at what this does to the people.
Mr. August, before you, before you leave, Mr. August, did you have a question of the speaker?
I do, and I'm going to try to be as kind as I possibly can, Kathleen.
Yes, Mr. August, thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see. And City Attorney, please correct me if you hear me say anything wrong here. Ms. Kathleen, where do you live?
I live in New Wabo, sir, but I, I shop and work and come in, in Menifee because of, of your area is where I, I come down.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm, I'm gonna say something now, and I, the people, the senior citizens where I live in the district, I live and anybody else in the city of Menifee. If we vote to approve this ordinance tonight, we're not banning the use of medical marijuana in the city. You can, uh, there's places in the city where you can go and get a prescription from a doctor.
No, you can get a prescription, sir, but, but how are you going to get to the medicine?
Well, wait a minute. No, because you can designate, because that doctor can designate somebody as your, uh, uh, medical marijuana caregiver. That person can go out and bring it to you also.
And where will they be getting it, sir?
Well, they won't be getting it in the city of Menifee if this ordinance passes tonight. But you can also grow it here in the city of Menifee if you, if, under the, uh, under the guise of AB 215, under the auspices of AB 215. So it's not exactly as, we're not taking away access or to marijuana from people who need it or prescribe for it.
Well, sir, if you have ever tried to grow, uh, which I'm sure you haven't. Right. But you may be growing tomatoes or you've grown cucumbers. And, you know, you put a garden in and it's not always.
Okay.
What comes out isn't what you, you would be able to use every day and use as a medicine, sir.
Okay.
Okay? And, and it is a medicine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Agreed. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Steve Baker.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come up and speak on the subject tonight. I myself do not live in Ma- uh, Menifee. I'm originally from Long Beach. I've just moved out to the Riverside area. And this is something that is close to my heart. I've been following a lot that's been going on. One of the problems that I see is because it is something new and we have been conditioned to more or less, every time we hear the word marijuana, to flinch and put it with bad people and bad activities and everything of that nature. I'm one that was exposed to it very young. I grew up in Wilmington, California. And I had all these fears in me. And I was threatened one day with having my butt kicked if I didn't partake with them. It's something to where I knew that they would do it to me. So I guess you could say that I started my experimentation with cannabis at that time. But it's one of the things that I did find out, that a lot of the things that I was told of, the dangers, were not true. And it did not come about. I do want to say that I have been consuming cannabis since I was age 12. I am 57 today. I really don't have much of a health problem. I do know that because of my use, I have not used alcohol in any recreational activities. But I have found the medical uses behind it just through the uses. And it's a use and not abuse. This is something that if you continue the prohibition here in this city, keeping anything that has to do with this medicine, a crime to where you're wanting to know about, well, what can we do to arrest? What about you asking, what can we do to try to assist in keeping things legal so we don't have 13-year-olds in our city running around on a delivery service when we could take control and allow an activity to happen as long as it is done safely? As far as the crimes of people robbing these things, I'm sure you have pizza deliveries in this city. And they get robbed all the time, but I'm sure you don't discuss, you know, stopping the delivery of pizza in this city because it does help with things. It's all a matter of bank robberies. We're not wanting to outlaw banks or change the way that those are done because you can possibly be shot when you go there. This is an activity that there are criminals out there that are gonna take advantage of any situation that's out there. But this is something that was set up for compassionate use for the people that need it. One of the things that was in 215 that wasn't, uh, mentioned during the Supreme Court hearings is that in there, there was something that the state was to set up, the safe access for cannabis. And the district, or the Attorney General did not do it because he was really for prohibition. And it's all about locking people up.
That would be your time.
And this is something that we can, you know, you can possibly change tonight.
Thank you. Are there, uh, any questions? Okay, next speaker, please?
Christopher Ketner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies, gentlemen. My name is Christopher Ketner. I'm 28 years old, and I have a medicinal marijuana card. For the first time in 10 years since I was 18, I've been able to sleep every single night. I have bipolar, too. Medicinal marijuana has helped me sleep. And it may not seem like a big deal to you, but when you pull two to three all-nighters on a weekly basis and your mind is all over the place, it's kinda hard to make, uh, just rational thoughts for yourself. I come here because if you outlaw this, and in November, bills have been passed that hike the taxation of medicinal marijuana as well as closing down dispensaries. I don't have a problem driving to Los Angeles or Orange County to pick up. But there are certain people, as you've seen tonight, that don't have that ability. And as also previously mentioned, with deliveries. Thank you. There are certain deliveries that sometimes do get robbed. But as also mentioned, that's kind of a part of it. I come to you to not say, let's completely get rid of medicinal marijuana and ban deliveries. Maybe put in a storefront, because right now, California is hurting for money. And I believe any sort of money that comes in, be it through legal marijuana or anything like that, should not have its back turned on. And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thank you very kindly. Uh, do we have any additional speakers?
Yes, sir. Ray Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Ray Johnson. I wasn't intending on speaking on this tonight. I saw it on the agenda and I couldn't resist. I'm an attorney, as you all probably know. What you don't know is that my wife was diagnosed in October with stage IV endometrial cancer. She had to go undergo radiation treatment before she could start chemo. She was taking nine hydrocodone a day plus Xanax. I had to go to a meeting in Riverside one evening. I was afraid to leave her alone. She had curled up in a ball and was, had given up. When I got home that night, the friend that I had had come out and stayed with her said, here's a phone number, call these people. So we went in to the doctor on Monday morning. And I should say that in the previous week and a half, she'd eaten a pint of chicken broth and a small container of cottage cheese. We went into, uh, we got our medical marijuana permit. We went to the dispensary that Monday night. I brewed up some tea for her with the, with the marijuana, and she had some marijuana brownies. The next morning, I woke up and she was in the kitchen fixing herself a three-egg omelet. When you're fighting cancer and going through radiation and chemo, it's critical to maintain energy. And she has been through radiation. She finished her sixth chemo this past Friday. And in August, we'll go back, 1st of August, and find out how the chemo was done. She has not lost one pound during that entire process. Her strength has remained high. It is a valid use. When I went into the doctor's office to get the, the permit with her, there weren't kids in there getting their medical marijuana permits. The youngest one there was probably 35 or 40 who had just had a leg amputated. Everybody else were a bunch of old farts like me. And what you're dealing with is older people. And I just had major back surgery. I knew that I was doing that, so I was able to go down to a dispensary, get the, uh, the materials that she needed before the surgery. Otherwise, I'm, you know, I'm her caregiver. I couldn't have gone down, uh, after the, the back surgery. I was the only one that could do it. So if you think you're gonna try and do something that's gonna keep kids from having marijuana, this isn't a way to do it. The only thing you would be doing here is preventing older people who need a service.
Mr. Johnson.
From getting that service.
Thank you. Do you have any additional speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from the council of any of the speakers? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at time 8:13. At this juncture, counsel, it's between us five. Mr. Furman, you were up first.
I can understand how the, an effort to keep Menifee an island in. I can understand how the, uh, an effort to keep Menifee an island in a green sea, but I always wondered how, uh, in a round island, how does, how do the waves keep going into all the shores? So, when you see a green, it's, it's hard to get away from this problem, alright? We already have a ban on dispensaries per se, and there's no dispensary's going to be allowed in the city, but where I see the problem is on the, on the delivery situation. I can't, I can't see how a police officer could make any kind of arrest, or stop a, a person making a delivery on probable cause, or if the only other way is to set up a sting, I am unwilling to spend the additional dollars in police services, basically on a fruitless effort. So, myself, I, I am in, in favor of delivery of marijuana to the people that need it in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mr. August? Mr. August?
First of all, that's pretty, some, we heard some pretty poignant testimony tonight. I would say that, um, I am not against the medicinal effects of marijuana, nor do I doubt, uh, any of the speaker's testimony tonight. I would like to, I, I believe this is true, and I've been doing a little bit of reading on this, but my question would be, why are more and more cities abandoning dispensaries and storefront dispensaries for marijuana? That would be one question, and my guess would be probably because of the influx of crime, something like that. I am, I might as well make this statement now, I, I am under no impression, in my community, nobody has ever called me on this subject, that any of the residents, even in the city of Menifee, um, that qualify for their prescriptive use of medical marijuana, per Assembly AB 215, need any additional assistance or delivery or acquisition of the drug. One of my constituents wrote me the other day, um, and I'd like to read you what he quoted, and I see him in the audience tonight, he said, "So long as we don't limit the ability of those requiring it for medicinal purposes," and it appears we don't, with the passage of this ordinance, "I would, uh, do nothing to expand this issue." Thank you, Don.
Okay, thank you, Mr. August, gentlemen, are there any other comments? Mr. Edgerton?
I'm going to support, um, this, this ordinance, but I would be remiss if I didn't say I was very troubled by supporting it. Since I have spent 10 years teaching at Senegal Central College, encouraging the students there to push for and encourage, um, the legalization of marijuana, and the decriminalization of drugs, um, and, and, and in my own background and former life, I have been a pharmaceutical representative for one of the major pharmaceutical companies in the world, I've been a surgical representative, and, um, the, the reason that we don't do medical research on certain drugs, marijuana, et cetera, is political, pure and simple, it's 100% political. There are, uh, the fact that marijuana has medicinal advantages, particularly as an anti-medic, but also other medicinal, medicinal advantages, is a scientific fact, it, it's, it's not disputable. Uh, it doesn't work the same way on everyone, and unless you smoke it, and it probably won't help you, you can take a brownie, and it's not going to work the same way as if you smoke it, but it's like any other, uh, drug, it works differently. I would add another fact, when you look around the world, and you look for the country, the one country in the entire world of over 200 countries, the United States incarcerates, puts in jail, more people than any other country in the world. Now, that's per capita, so you can compare us to a small country, or a large country, any way you want to measure it, we arrest more of our people and imprison them than any other nation in the world, including the dictatorships. A third of those people are because of marijuana and, and, and drug use. And if you want to save a lot of tax dollars, we're always trying to build new prisons, just decriminalize, preferably, you would legalize at least marijuana, so that Liggett and Myers and those guys could sell it in the drugstore, it isn't going to increase your drug use, and it'll decrease it. If you really care about your kids, smoking marijuana and using drugs, then legalize it, because right now, it is a multi-multi-billion, billion with a B, dollar business, they have sonar submarines, they have aircraft, um-
Ladies and gentlemen, maintain decorum.
And it is in the hands of illegal corporations, it is in the hands of thugs and underground. Why not put it in the hands of legal corporations, regulate it, and collect the taxes? Also, you would be getting something pure, you, you read all the time about kids dying, celebrities dying, because they get a mixture of the, um, of the wrong stuff. Your jails are packed, we're letting people out of prison, and some of them haven't, uh, haven't ostensibly committed serious crimes, but they plea bargain down. If you would let the people with marijuana out of jail, we would have space, we would be overloaded with space, we're letting bad people out on the street. My concern, and I'm very troubled by it, my concern about this ordinance, and the reason I'm supporting it, and I have mixed emotion, terrible mixed emotions, is that, um, because I wish that the US Congress would, would legalize it nationally, and, so we could get over this hump, uh, and, and it's absurd, we, we can't even grow hemp in this country. Uh, you, smoke hemp, it'll just make you sick. I, it, it, it is, it is downright ignorant and stupid, hemp belongs to the same family as you have in marijuana, so where do we buy our hemp? In the hundreds of millions of dollars, you paid for it as taxpayers, and every other civilized country grows it, and we buy it, and we say, well, there may be some marijuana in there. Uh, it, it, it is really a bizarre political picture we painted for ourselves, so I don't want my kids in the class to think, uh, that I'm hypocritical on this. Um, I, I do, I am concerned about a small town, um, having a concentration of people moving in an area, uh, because there is a small percentage of people who use drugs, whether it be alcohol, or marijuana, or anything else that are, that are lawbreakers. So, I'm going to support this ordinance, but I do want to point out, as I support it, I'm well aware, uh, it's an ongoing continuation of making laws that are heading in just the opposite direction of where we ought to be going.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton, Ms. Councilmember Furman.
I just wanted to make, uh, one comment on the, the 215 card, okay? There's a lot of people that have, have a 215 card, that don't even want to let their neighbors know that they have it, it's not a, it's not a thing you run down the street, like you won the lottery, that, hey, I got a 215 card, you know, they don't wave them around, and, uh, you'd be surprised the number of people that have a 215 card, and their neighbors don't even know, so...
Enough said.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? I'd entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion to approve this-
A motion to introduce the ordinance, uh, which bans mobile marijuana dispensaries in the city.
Right.
Is that a motion?
It is.
May I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
On to agenda item 11.2.
Oh, could I, could I just make one clarification?
Sure.
I would speculate that every single person in this room, at some time, has tried pot, and you have inhaled, except for the President of the United States, you haven't.
Never, never.
Wow. Well, I know, no one behind the dais has ever tried it.
Okay, on to agenda item 11.2, annual landscape and lighting district charges, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jonathan Smith will give the update, or the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The city of Menifee has L and LMD zones, and street lighting zones within the city boundary, which are managed by the county of Riverside. Mark Hughes is the primary, uh, manager for the city's, uh, program, he's available to ask detailed questions. Um, at the July 2nd, 2013 council meeting, council approved the process to begin to place the annual assessments on the tax rolls. The proposed assessments are described in Attachment A in the, in the report. The annual budget for the fiscal year is 1,160,355 dollars. Adoption of this resolution will allow the city of Menifee to collect sufficient funds to meet its maintenance obligations for the L and LMD. The recommended actions tonight are to conduct the public hearing for the LMD number 89-1-C, adopt the resolution number 13-326, a resolution in the city of Menifee confirming the diagram and assessments of the LMD. Authorize the county of Riverside to administer the LMD 89-1-C, budget for the fiscal year 2013 to 14. That ends my, uh, presentation, uh, as I mentioned, Mark Hughes is here from the county to answer any, uh, detailed questions that we may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith, uh, council, is there any questions of staff? Questions only? Mr. August?
I don't have any.
Mr. Furman?
Uh, I have a question, Jonathan, on, uh, section 1D, okay? And I don't know if you can give me some help on this, in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "The installation of multipurpose trails and the installation of fences," alright? Now, I have a, I have a, a gentleman in my district that will give an easement to connect the trail to Lake Elsinore from Menifee, there's going to be a trail to connect the two cities. Now, he said he'd donate the easement if, if we put up the money. Now, how could we get, under this plan, how can we get that multipurpose trail put in under this?
Um, I, I'd like to pass that along to, uh, Mark Hughes, uh, who can answer, uh, that question for us.
Okay, go ahead.
Before you go, miss, before you answer, Mr. Hughes, uh, Mr. Johnson, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm actually going to bail you both out of this, and turn it over to our city attorney, I don't believe that's part of the public hearing for tonight.
No.
It is not, this is, this is merely an assessment issue-
Oh, okay.
...so we can't do anything about that here.
I'd be happy to discuss that another time.
If we could, Tom, if you could hold it over to your-
Yeah, I can, okay, that's fine, sure.
-to your, the, uh, agenda item portion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Excellent.
That's fine.
All right, are there any additional questions of staff? Very well, uh, we'll open the public hearing at 8:27, Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed, and have we received any correspondence?
It was noticed, we have not received correspondence.
Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Oh, very well, I'll close the public hearing at 8:28, council, what's your pleasure on this agenda item?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
On to agenda item 11.3, uh, resolution number 13-331, confirming special assessments for unpaid trash collection services, staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Wendy Welsh, our finance manager, is pinch-hitting for Terry Willoughby, has a brief, uh, report for you.
Upon incorporation, the city of Menifee adopted Riverside County Ordinance 745, by which authority the city of Menifee was established as an area where waste collection is mandatory. The method of collection of delinquent accounts adopted by the city of Menifee, and cited in the agreement with Waste Management, is to annually place those delinquent accounts on the county tax roll as special assessments. At this time, there are numerous accounts that have had waste collection service, but have not paid for those services. Staff is requesting that city council adopt resolution 13-331, to confirm the special assessments related to unpaid accounts for trash collection services.
Thank you, are there any questions from the council of staff? Mr. Denver?
I'm confused only to the degree that if we approved this already, why are we approving it a second time? Why don't they just do it?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir, uh, this is an annual assessment that needs to be done annually, based on the tax assessments for the service provided.
Did I just hear you say that we have to approve them putting it on people's tax rolls each and every year?
Yes, it's part of our franchise agreement.
We're going to sit here and, and have a meeting, and, and approve this document every year?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Furman?
A, uh, just a quick explanation on how the lean system works? How do you, how do you put the lean on?
Mr. Johnson?
I'd be happy to address that, under the fran, order of the franchise, there's mandatory collection throughout the city, uh, that means that, uh, the city, under AB 939, uh, has a franchise agreement with the, with the waste taller, uh, they actually provide services based on the, the ordinance that we have, and those services that are not provided are placed upon the tax roll through the county.
Any additional questions of staff? All right, thank you, we'll open the public hearing at time 8:30, Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed, and have we received any correspondence?
It was properly noticed, we did not receive any further correspondence.
Any, uh, public testimony?
No, sir.
Thank you, we'll close the public hearing at time 8:31, and I have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Agenda item 11.4, Appeal of Planning Commission Denial of Plot Plan 2012-178 and Variance Number 2012-184, renewal of Summit Equipment Rentals, Equipment Storage Yard, including sales, rentals, service, and offices. Is there a staff report?
There is, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Lisa Gordon, Acting Planning Manager, has a report for you.
Good evening, this project is located on, it's located south of Scott Road, east of Bailey Park Boulevard, and west of the 215 freeway, it's highlighted in blue on your screen. Some background on this project, Summit Equipment Rentals has been operating an unpermitted equipment sales and rental office and storage facility since at least April 2008. The applicant processed a plot plan to legalize the unpermitted use, which was approved-
Lisa, could I, could I just, could we look at that map again, just one more time?
Yeah, could you go back?
Sure, um-
Put this in my mind.
Which ways north?
Go ahead and give them their boundaries, and where the location is.
It's east of Bailey Park Boulevard, right, adjacent to Bailey Park Boulevard. South of Scott Road, north of Keller.
Where's Scott Road here?
Scott Road, straight across here, Wally.
Shoot, I thought it was that.
That's up here.
Right across the top.
Okay.
Okay.
It's also further east of Ziders, you can see Ziders', uh, parcel over, a large parcel over.
Okay.
Okay.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so going back, Summit Equipment Rentals has been operating an unpermitted equipment sales and rental office and storage facility since at least April 2008. The applicant processed a plot plan to legalize the unpermitted use, which was approved by the city's planning commission in January of 2011. Because the use was existing, and the applicant was actively operating onsite, the conditions of approval for the plot plan created specific timeframes for compliance. The applicant submitted, did I skip one? Okay, sorry, it skipped a few. The applicant agreed to the conditions of approval at the time the plot plan was approved by the planning commission. The Phase 1 conditions, including road improvements, were all supposed to be met by the applicant by June 2012. The applicant did not comply with the timeframes and the conditions of approval, and therefore the plot plan approval expired, and became null and void. The applicant submitted a new plot plan in November of 2012 to again legalize the existing unpermitted use. The applicant originally agreed to accept all of the previous conditions of approval, including road improvements, but there were still disagreements on the timing for some of the conditions of approval. So, the planning department scheduled the project for Planning Commission to get direction on appropriate timing for the conditions. Between February of 2013 and June 2013, the plot plan was presented to the Planning Commission on four separate occasions. The Planning Commission continued the project three times to allow the applicant additional time to work with the city on the conditions. In between Planning Commission meetings, the applicant communicated to staff that they no longer accepted proposed conditions of approval for road improvements necessary to provide primary and secondary access, and they no longer accepted conditions for sewer improvements. Therefore, the plot plan was recommended for denial at the June 11th, 2013, Planning Commission. The Planning Commission denied the plot plan at that meeting based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report. An appeal of the Planning Commission denial was filed on June 14th of this year. The appeal listed multiple arguments why the project should not have been denied. The staff report provides a response to each argument raised by the appellant. The primary reason for denial of the application is that the developer has stated he will not conform to the conditions of approval to provide road improvements for primary or secondary access. The plot plan does not provide for the protection of public health, safety, and general, general welfare, as it does not provide paved, primary, and secondary access. Failure to provide paved access will prevent or delay access of the site by emergency vehicles, and paved access is necessary for this development based on the types of vehicles traveling to and from the site. The vehicles will be carrying heavy equipment, because it is an equipment sales and rental yard. Without primary and secondary access, the project is inconsistent with the general plan, zoning code, and fire code. The staff report lists out multiple general plan policies which the project is not consistent with. In addition, industrial projects and the light industrial land use designation are required to provide sewer facilities as stated in Land Use Policy 24.7. If it cannot be guaranteed that the project will connect to sewer, then the project is not consistent with the general plan. The project site is within the Interstate 215 South Corridor policy area, which does allow for some modifications to the requirement for connection to sewer. This policy is, I'll read it all for you. Development applications may be approved in the absence of a water and sewer facilities program if they comply with all requirements established by the water and sewer purveyor, and they are conditioned to participate in any future water and sewer facilities financing program, or in the absence of such a program at the time of construction, to construct their fair share of off-site dry water and sewer facilities improvements. The applicant, at this time, has only proposed construction of sewer lines along their project frontage and not off-site facilities that would bring sewer to the site. Therefore, the project is not considered consistent with this policy. Due to inconsistency with the general plan and zoning, as described previously and in the staff report, the Planning Commission was unable to make the code-required findings to approve the project. At this time, staff recommends that we adopt a resolution denying the plot plan subject, or based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, and adopt the resolution denying the variance, also based upon the findings and conclusions in the staff report. Staff requests that the staff report and PowerPoint presentation be retained by the city clerk as part of the official public record on this item. This concludes staff presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council of staff? Mr. Furman?
Lisa, do you know what the vote on the Planning Commission was?
I believe-
4-1, 3-2, 5-0? Okay, I won't hold you to that. Okay. All right.
You know what?
I, I heard that there was over 100 conditions of approval on this project. Is that true?
There were several conditions of approval. I'd have to look through the whole package to, to get you that information. When you have a major plot plan, the plot plan is conditioned by the planning department, our engineering department, Riverside County Fire, Riverside County Environmental Health, Riverside County Environmental Programs Department. So, the conditions add up, but a lot of them are general conditions, like comply with ordinances, come, get a grading permit, get a building permit. Most of the conditions are fairly standard, and they, they do get fairly long, but that is, it's, it's necessary to have all those conditions in the, in the set.
Do you, do you have a, an amount of money that this gentleman has spent already at all? Is there a figure on where he's at financially?
I don't have that dollar amount, no.
He paid the K-Rat fee and stuff like that, right?
The applicant has paid for processing the original plot plan, and what they pay for that is staff time to review the projects, prepare it for the meetings, prepare the staff reports. The applicant has made a deposit for the new plot plan and variance. That account is actually negative. The applicant has also provided a, a deposit for their review of the landscaping plan. That was approved. They've provided a deposit for the landscape inspections. They have paid their Stevens kangaroo rat fees. They have paid school fees to the school districts, and I believe they have submitted a deposit with the Building and Safety Department for review of the building plans. Those are the fees that have been paid.
Would you, would you just have a rough amount? Is the end this for 50,000, 100,000?
I don't have that information. I don't want to guess on that.
Okay, someone else fire away.
Any additional questions of staff? No more questions at this juncture? Very well, I'm going to open the public hearing at time 8:40. And Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed? And have we received any correspondence associated?
It was properly noticed. I have no further correspondence for you.
Do we have any public testimony on this?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
I would believe we would want to call the applicant's representative first, Raymond Johnson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm David Leonard, actually, representing Summit Equipment Rentals. Mr. Johnson is in the audience, but we kind of have it set up for me to go first and cover some technical issues, and then follow if that's okay. You probably won't be surprised if we have a slightly different take on the presentation staff provided, but I also want to acknowledge that in addition, in addition to Mr. Johnson, George Courtney, one of the owners of Summit Equipment Rentals, is in the audience this evening, in case you have questions of him. Just to answer some of the questions that have already come up, the vote was four to one at the Planning Commission. The applicant, we do keep track of these things, is right about $100,000 into the project, and in addition, we have paid the Stevens kangaroo rat fees, the Paris High School fees, the Menifee Union School District fees, and the landscape maintenance fee. And we were poised to just keep going through the list of conditions to, in terms of plan processing and fees until the issue of denial came up. At that point, we, we kind of put things on hold. But I'd like to, first of all, let you know that the intent of Summit Equipment Rentals is to consolidate a number of operations they have scattered in Orange County, Temecula, and Menifee to this location, and have all of those operate as a business center on this site. You have seen through the plot plan that there is a building that that's metal right now that would be converted to a, a stucco structure building that it would look as if it were built as a stick structure. A office building is coming as Phase 2. As that process would unfold, the, the rental equipment function would diminish on the site, although there would be some presence of that. So, it is taking on the presence of more of an office complex than as a contractor type of facility, although that service is needed in the community by many of the contractors locally and in the region. The premise of the original approval, that Summit would tie into improvements that were constructed by Commerce Point. At that time, Commerce Point was way ahead of us in the process. They were, I believe, into plan check reviews and engineering. We were just going through the initial planning process. We had jurisdictional changes. We were a long way out. We did not anticipate that Commerce Point would run into permitting issues themselves to regional agencies and require quite a delay in terms of working those out. And that, and, and as it turned out, thrust Summit into the lead on major improvements into the area. Summit also faced delays in moving forward with the project that are documented in the appeal, but if you'd like me to elaborate those, I will be happy to do so. But at this point, I'd like to go into the basis for some of its concerns that you mentioned how many questions or conditions there are. There are about 100 conditions. The two issues that we're trying to resolve are two, just two. First off, is access. The basis for Summit's objection is that access condition is that it is a throwaway improvement. It would be replaced by half-wit and full-wit streets constructed by Commerce Point at some point, which we are told by the engineering staff that is fairly imminent. The paved access for which Summit is conditioned, that's a two-lane paved access, would be in about $125,000 based on city engineering staff estimates. That's why Summit sought to do a grade and gravel road and participate in a fair share cost with Commerce Point, to reimburse them for improvements that they would do on behalf of obligations that Summit would have. This was deemed sufficient for all of the properties in this area, for shops at Scott when the Bailey Park Boulevard Street was to be closed. Shops at Scott was allowed to, had a condition to do a grade and gravel road. It was their secondary access. This has been considered our primary. And they, in lieu of that, was, were able to post an $18,000 bond, and that was the end of their obligation. I suppose that would be revisited at the point that Bailey Park would be closed. But the point is, we're, we have had trouble understanding why we couldn't do that as an interim solution in anticipation of ultimate improvements coming forward. That, that proposal was rejected. We then moved forward to offer that Summit would construct Bailey Park and Chikati, that's a secondary access going back out to Wickard Lane, with half-wit and full-wit improvements jointly, so that you wouldn't end up, rather than building a throwaway two, two-lane street, you would end up with half-wit and full-wit street improvements, a more complete street system all at once. That proposal was also objective, or rejected because of concerns about the logistics of, in trying to deal with two projects, two sets of conditions. That's what development agreements for, for. If, if, if there was an interest in pursuing that, that was something we would be very interested in doing. Summit has never requested a subsidy from the city to construct improvements, as stated on page 25 of the staff report. But Summit is concerned about constructing street improvements for the benefit of all properties in the local area without any form of reimbursement. They only want to be treated fairly in terms of what their neighbors have been able to do with the projects in the area. As much as I've talked about access and the concern that that's raised, that was eclipsed by the question of sewer. Summit Equipment Rentals operates two chemical toilets. That's what they get by with today at the, at the, at the development, and it serves them quite adequately. Prior to obtaining a plan of services from EMWD, the sewer costs were estimated $148,500 to connect to a point at Wickard Road, again, going south down Bailey Park and, and over Chikati to Wickard. That equates to $74,250 per toilet, and the staff feels that that is a proportional cost to the project and impact that would be create. Since receiving, or the, since receiving the plan of services, which we've done even since the Planning Commission hearing, because we started that while under review at the Planning Commission, got it afterwards, we have learned that the costs are going to increase substantially over the $148,500 that I mentioned. Summit has agreed to a septic system to serve those two fixtures. Summit has agreed to sewer laterals and the future office and building frontage improvements to facilitate a future connection to sewer, and we are totally expectant that when Phase 2 moves forward to add the office building, that that would be connected to the sewer. That's just the expectation that we have. Ms. Gordon did read into the record a, a policy that's very relevant in the general plan that stipulates that development projects may move forward in the absence of water and sewer. And it also has, besides receiving our plan of services from the water and sewer purveyor for the area, we learned that they, EMWD, would not be requiring us to connect to a sewer, provided that a septic system would operate properly, as, as verified through a percolation test on the site. EMD Public Plan of Services for Septic sets out a protocol for review and approval of septic systems by the County Health Department, and that we need, and again, we would have to connect to sewer if the, if the septic system did not operate properly. We believe that the sewer's requirements imposed on this project is not legal, because it then vests the authority over sewer to the city rather than the purveyor, who is charged with that responsibility. In fact, the engineering department is, is required to make conditions without knowledge of the EMWD master plan, the capacities of the facilities that are already existing, the points of connection, or the obligations others have to place. That's an impossible condition to impose on staff to, when, when they don't have that information at their hands. Summit realizes there's a high interest to compel them to leave the site, and that's so stated in the staff report. The planning and zoning support the land use of Summit Rent Equipment Rentals with a plot plan approval. Conditioning a plot plan with unreasonable off-site increment, improvements to force them out is not a basis for them to be inconsistent with the general plan and the zoning of the property. Applying the proposed general plan requirements, as they have, presupposes changes that will occur as a result of public input in the plan through future hearings on the plan. We don't think that looking at the future general plan is valid application of this property, and again, we believe that the property will remain consistent in terms of what the goals and objectives are for this area anyway, as a result of the improvements that we're making. Summit did process a plot plan that was approved with, with extensive onsite architecture, fencing, and landscaping upgrades that they are fully committed to make. In fact, that's the next step. If we have an approval, we have contracts in place for landscaping and fencing to move immediately. The engineering services are ready to go, but again, it's a small problem of a denial and recommendation. Summit has resubmitted this plus, plot plan to reset the clock for improvements to occur and not to be used as a means to impose more off-site improvements. They proceeded to make good faith efforts to comply with the improvement schedule agreed with staff. And Ms. Gordon mentioned that there was early disagreement. We resolved those issues, but it would again, would have to be revisited based on the fact that, that the time has passed in terms of the specific dates that were mentioned. We have paid the various fees for processing. The landscaping and building plans are already approved by the city. Building plans approved on February 25th. Summit has the only business to step forward to do the right thing by filing these applications for land use approvals, and they did it twice. No one else in this area has done it. When they got notice that there was a possible code violation, they contacted the county at the time, got verification. He then contacted, found his way to me and another consultants to begin preparing packages to submit to the county. So, he did, as soon as he became aware of the problem, start to try to correct it. We would ask the city council to uphold this appeal and allow the development to proceed with reasonable conditions for sewer and street improvements. One thing you might be interested in knowing is relating to the fiscal considerations, is that currently there are 15 employees working at the site, and it generates, staff didn't know this, about $3 million a year in sales. With the project improvements in place and going at full operation, there would be 50 employees at the site and 15 to 20 million dollars in sales. We don't think that that is too, too small, too small chump change to, to just pass over in terms of this, this application. We would request your approval of this appeal. And, well, let me ask if you have any questions of me.
Any questions, Mr. Furman?
If you supposedly restart the clock, could this all be accomplished in four years?
Oh, no, 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 within two years.
Within two years? Okay. I was going to give you four, okay.
Mr. Denver?
Is, in, in my world, in real estate, oftentimes on things like this, as I remember, when you have to build further than your property some distance, you come up with the money upfront, but then the people who you build in front of are required to pay you back over time. There's an obligation to be paid back. Is that any part of this?
There would be the possibility for future reimbursement, especially for the sewer. The road improvements that are going to be required for primary and secondary access is, let me show you an exhibit. It's Bailey Park Road, all the way south to Chikati, and then Chikati Road, west to Ziders Road. As Ms.-
I'm sorry. Okay, I've got Bailey Park Road here. Where is Chikati?
Chikati is just off the map.
On the bottom?
Yeah. And then that would connect to Ziders Road. Yeah. And then that would connect to Zider's Road.
Now, you want Chikati going west to Zider Road?
Yes. Because Zider's Road is going to be the only...
And I'm sorry, you're asking this man to pave Bailey Road to Chikati?
Yes.
And then what about Chikati to Zider?
Yes. To do a...
You want him to pave...
Two-lane paved road. That's what was in the original...
A two-lane paved road?
Yes. That was in the original conditions of approval for the plot plan, and it was something we were still going to require with the new plot plan. Commerce Point Industrial Project, they're moving forward, and they are also conditioned to make road improvements on Chikati and Zider's. But we don't know for sure whether or not they will still build. The odds are good, but each project has to stand on its own, and each project has to be conditioned as if the other one wasn't there. And then if everything works out right, the projects work, kind of construct together, and they work on these improvements together. But we have to condition each project for whatever improvements are needed for that specific project, if nothing else was going to happen.
But, but did, my comment was, is that if they make, if they improve all that road, why would, couldn't, isn't there a possibility that it could be, there could be a lien placed on the people on both sides along the ways for any future improvements that they get paid back?
For Bailey. For Chikati, it's just an interim two-lane road, and so if Commerce Point builds the ultimate, they wouldn't need to provide reimbursement, I believe. Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong.
You, that, they're building a temporary road?
It's just a two-lane interim road. Chikati is actually designated as an industrial collector, which would have, I believe, four lanes.
So we're requiring them to build a road that's going to be in the, probably in the reasonable future, torn out and improved again?
It's possible that it will be torn out, yes. But right now, there's no access to the site other than Bailey Park Road, which isn't completely improved all the way to Scott. And Bailey Park will be closed, so they need a secondary access. When Bailey Park closes to the north at Scott, their only paved access to the site will be Bailey Park via Chikati.
Then the sewer is basically the same concept. They run the sewer down Bailey Park to some source, maybe they go over, and once again, you're, no possibility that someone else who might have, be a property owner along that sewer has to pay them back?
The property owners that would connect to any sewer extension provided by this project would have to enter into a reimbursement agreement, and that would all be handled by Eastern Municipal Water District.
Mr. Mayor, just, just out of curiosity, I've, I lived near here for about 15 years. It's my understanding, actually, there are a number of people through there that don't have permits. Is that correct?
It's correct.
I guess the reason I'm a little uncomfortable with this, he's taught, he's got 15 employees. If he goes to 50 employees, that's great, but I'm talking about a bird in the hand. He's got 15 employees right now. We've just all been to Las Vegas, had a good time, trying to find new businesses to bring to town. And I'm seeing any number of our existing businesses being put under what they perceive. I'm not suggesting that is the case, but what they perceive as unfair and unpredictable impositions. And so then I look at this and I think, okay, we've all been to Vegas to get new business. Let's shut this guy down. That'll get rid of 15 employees and their families. It'll get rid of a business, and the road still won't be paved, will it? The sewer won't be in, will it? And so I'm, I'm left with saying, what is it that this guy's willing to do right now? Have we, have we sat down with this guy and said, "Look, I tell you what, in six months from today, if you're willing to work with us, will you do this, and this, and this, and this"? Now, I must say that if you're going to ask the guy to pave the road all the way to Chikati, and from Chikati West all the way across to Zider Road, I can see why that causes him some heartburn. That, usually, when you do a project like that, if I'm not mistaken, you're responsible for the frontage of your own property, not, not for a street, in this case, all the way south and all the way west.
You're responsible for the frontage, ultimate improvements along your property's frontage. And then if there is not a paved access to your site so that fire trucks can get there, so that the vehicles using the property, people working at the property can't get there, you have to provide the off-site access.
You're talking about, you're talking about when we cut off the Bailey Park Road to Scott, because right now, there's no problem of access.
You need primary and secondary access. Right now, they only have a primary.
City Attorney?
Just if I could interrupt, we really should hear the full presentation from the appellant and then have this conversation with staff.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Could you...
I'm, I'm sorry. We shouldn't, I'm, I'm not long enough to get here. We, the conversation you're having is certainly relevant, but it would be best to first hear out the appellant completely. If you have questions of the appellant, that's fine, but these kind of questions with staff should come after the presentation.
So I should ask the appellant this?
We, you should, or wait until afterwards.
As you're saying. Yeah, because I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, because I sat in on a situation just the other day where a business was within two days of closing down, and, and the former community development person was sitting there, and I said, "Well, what about this? What about this? What about this?" And pretty soon, we had an agreement. And, and, and it really bothers me. I see people unpermitted all the way around this guy. And, and it looks to me like, when you're asking him to pave that much space, that's, that's quite an imposition. We've got, you made one comment here. It says, and I will ask the applicant a question, but it says, "The city was concerned that allowing the applicant too much time to meet the conditions of approval while the business continued to be open and operating could be perceived as unequal application of the law for other property owners." Well, it's my understanding, any city, particularly newer ones, you look at new businesses differently than you look at established businesses. Those established businesses were there before we got here. They all have different circumstances. You look at them one-on-one. I mean, I noticed you mentioned other people here that complied, like the Texas Roadhouse. That is a major corporation.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? Please, at this juncture, of a public hearing? We have one more speaker, and there may be public...
Would you, would you help us provide certain things in reference to, and by the way, let me, let me ask you this. What, how, how far are you, what are they asking you in reference to the sewage?
They're asking us to construct a sewer line south down Bailey Park and then across to Chikati. When you get to, at the juncture where Bailey Park meets Chikati, you're going uphill, therefore, it needs to be a forced main sewer. Then there is a lift station. Thank you, Jonathan. A lift station required to gravity fluid back there. So those are the, part of the substantial cost increases. It's not just building the sewer line. It's all of the component parts that come with it.
And, and the cost on that is roughly?
We were at 184 with that before. We knew that the, that there was a lift station and the forced mains, so we're easily in the 250, we believe.
About 250,000. And, and did you discuss with the city about a major kind of septic?
Oh, yes.
Because this whole area is primarily septic.
I, I think we have agreement that there would be a, we have agreement that there would be a septic tank installed on site to handle the existing use, and, and that the Phase Two would go to a sewer anticipating that sewer would be in place as a result of construction in Commerce Point, in the vicinity of the site, and it would be connected at that point. That's what, that's part of the conditions.
So the city has agreed to allow you to utilize the septic at this point?
Provided that it, that the property passes a percolation test.
Okay, the perk test. And, and, and so your complaint about the road is what? You feel it's unfair to pave it that far?
It's a throwaway improvement. Why don't we build something that's going to be permanent? And, and there are different ways to do that, either through an assessment, benefit assessment district, or through a development agreement between two willing developers, to accomplish that in an orderly manner. But it's a throwaway part of wasting those resources when they could be applied more efficiently to other public infrastructure. The sewer is just a nonstarter to begin with, because the costs are way beyond the ability of this project to carry. And we believe that the authority for, for making those decisions should and does rest with EMWD.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear the other speaker?
Yeah, Mr. August has a question.
A couple of questions. I'm not sure that I can ask them yet, but how many people own this piece of property?
Two.
Two people? When did they purchase the property?
2006.
I think, I think 2007.
2007? Can I ask you what you paid for the property?
Eight hundred and twenty thousand?
Okay. And I, I believe we, I think the staff report says fair market values, somewhere around eight, nine, somewhere around in that. So she haven't, you really haven't turned it into too much of a profit yet. My question with this whole thing, is this been going on for four years? And I have a real estate broker's license, I have a background in two. You can, you agreed to conditions of approval to begin with. Those conditions, those two primary conditions with road access and, and the sewer, haven't even been attempted to, to be fixed or accomplished by you. And, and I get the feeling from you that you've just been, kind of been going from one spot to the next. You said there's a hundred condition, conditions of approval on the property. I'm showing in the book, I'm looking at it, we're 17 with the city. Out of those 17, in four years, as far as I know, you have only accomplished five of those. Can you explain to me in five years, four, almost five years, how you haven't been able to accomplish more than five conditional use, you know, conditional use, conditional uses or whatever of approval? Can you explain that to me, please?
Yes, I can. At the time that the project was approved, again, there was a premise the Commerce Point was ahead, and they would, we would be tying into improvements that they constructed. That was a huge premise in terms of reducing costs. Second thing is, at the time of, and this is 2008, the economy tanked. The business went under and, or was going under for Summit Equipment Rental, and he had to do something to save the business and try his best to continue implementing the conditions of approval. We started immediately to process the light items, the landscape improvements. He went in to try to refinance equipment he had just purchased, thinking the economy was going to be more bullish than it was. He purchased those on short-term notes. He then tried to refinance those on long-term notes. By the time he went all the way through the financing process, which seemed to be endless, if you try to buy a house in recent years, he was butting up against a timeframe that was, was virtually not worth getting the loan. The business was picking up, and, and he was in the ability of restoring the business. Second component of that is a condition of approval that was a reasonable one, that took more time than we expected, and that was dealing with the existing structure. We had architectural plans that had to be done to, to convert the building from metal to what they call an EFS product, a stucco-looking material. That required a special inspection of the structural stability of the, of the building. The original structural engineer was not available to do that at the time. We then went to other structural engineers, and they wouldn't touch it for liability reasons. That took about eight months to go through, and finally, we got the original structural engineer to agree to reevaluate, redo the cacs, and, and make those as part of the submittal of the plan check package, which was mandatory in order to submit in November of 2012. As soon as we got those structural cacs, those engineering plans went into engineering department. Engineering department approved those in February. We thought we were going out to bid packages in, in March, in order to begin construction in June. So that's the timetable we were in, unfortunate circumstances.
Just two more questions. So, so what I'm hearing from you is that, I think I'm hearing this, if I'm, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but it's really kind of been a series of events where it's been an inability for you to perform, not the city. I mean, unfortunate times, bad economy.
During that period, the, the city was not holding us up, no. Our, our problem was getting to a point where we were able to meet the conditions of approval.
Okay, my last question. If your appeal is denied tonight, what happens?
He then has to evaluate other options to preserve his, his standing on the site.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do we have any additional questions at this juncture of this speaker? Mr. Furman?
I actually just wanted to make a comment, because I just had a meeting with Ron Sullivan, and the average lift station cost, if you have to bring something up eight feet, is $250,000.
Okay, thank you. Just as we go through this process as a public hearing, we have questions of the speakers. You'll be able to make all the statements you want to when we close the hearing. Please proceed, Mr. Johnson.
Yes. I, I'm normally on the other side of these sorts of issues, but...
Please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Raymond Johnson, 26785 Camino Seco, Temecula, California, 92590. And the reason I normally am is I'm, I'm trying to, to help people who I think are not getting fair treatment. And so here I am tonight, and I think that, one of the issues is, is that, you know, this is the only guy in the area that's trying to do it right. So let's, let's give him static and forget about all the rest of the people who are there with nonconforming uses, who are trying to do nothing to try and make it right, which seems to make no sense at all, when you start going after the one guy who is trying to, to make it right. I think that there is an argument based on the amount of money that he spent that he, he may well have vested right in that, that use in any event. I think that additionally, I question whether or not there is a constitutional nexus between the sewer improvements and the road improvements that are, are being required of him. And later on in the process, this was conditioned in January 25, 2011. This is not an old, old, old project. He started dealing with it when it was actually with the county, but ended up switching over when the city became a city, and it was finally approved in January 25, 2011. So that's when his conditions of approval became final conditions of approval. So it's not like those conditions of approval have been out there for, you know, for five, six years. And eventually, I think what happened was the city started slow-walking this through based on the fact that they thought that there may be a change in the general plan and the zoning as a result of that. And the staff report goes into that, and saying, "Well, it's not consistent with the new general plan." Well, you don't have a new general plan. You have an existing general plan. You have an existing zoning. And the requirement of the law is that they be consistent with the existing general plan and the existing zoning, not what you would like for it to be at some point in time in the future, because it hasn't been adopted, and you don't know what that's going to be. You know, I, you have a developer here who wants to, I think, wants to develop the property, wants to do it right. I don't think that he had been offered the opportunity for participation agreements on streets and sewers previously. And that's something that I think that he certainly is, is willing to look at. Rather than fighting about it, he would like to simply be able to reach some, some reasonable agreement on the conditions that would allow him to go forward and expand the business.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions of Mr. Johnson? City Attorney?
I don't have questions for Mr. Johnson. Excuse me. I don't have a question for Mr. Johnson, but I did want to call to your attention that just before the hearing came up, we have been presented with a letter... that just before the hearing came up, we have been presented with a letter by, from Mr. Johnson, which we can distribute to you, that addresses the staff report. That's, that's one item.
That would be the package that was just handed to the city clerk this evening during the hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you want it to be distributed?
We can distribute it. In the meantime, are there any additional questions from the council of any of the speakers of the appellant? Any additional questions?
Are you going to close?
I am, I am indeed.
Then, yes, I have a question. Can you give us, can the applicant give us, let us say that we, well, first of all, let me have a clear understanding. If, if, if we uphold what the planning condition has done here, does the city then move in and there's a cease and desist as far as that business is concerned?
If you uphold the denial, there's no cease or desist, there's just no project. It's, the applicant is denied the plot plan.
So, and what about the business that he's running at that site?
It's then inconsistent and in violation of the code. Excuse me, of the code.
And, and, and it will be closed, is that it?
Presumably.
It will be enforced, Mr. Johnson? Is that, is that the?
I believe my role from the council's direction is to enforce the code.
Enforce the code, of course. So in other words, those fifteen employees, those families will be out of work after tonight, right?
I can't make a, a decision based on, based on that. There's other opportunities, other locations they could possibly move to. He mentioned he has three other yards, one in Irvine, one in Temecula, one here. Not sure why they chose this area with these issues, but they did. And we have development code requirements that we have to uphold.
What, what, is there?
Hang on, sir. Is there any additional questions of the appellant right now?
Yes. Can I get some feedback from you as to, let us say, not two years, but six months? What, what in your mind is reasonable for your, for your company to do, to make a commitment to the city if we were to sit down and negotiate with you? I, I, I will talk about this later. I have some real reservations about the staff's involvement in negotiation with this company in the past, but be that as it may. If we were to, if we were to begin, by the way, have I ever met you?
No, I'm Dave Leonard. Glad to meet you, Mr. Edgerton.
Have I ever met the owner of this co-, are you the owner?
I'm George Courtney.
I, I don't know you guys from Adam, just I want to make that as part of the record.
If we do not have a yard in Temecula.
Okay. Let's say over the next six months, have you, have you sat down and said, "Well, can we do this, 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 and this, and we'll do this over the next six months?"
Yes, that's, that's the schedule that I'm digging for right now. What would happen within six months is landscaping would be installed, the fencing would be installed, the development fees, which are something like $64,000 bucks, would be paid. The MSHCP mitigation fees of about $18,000 would be paid. We would be very close, if not submitted, on street improvement plans, and that's just off the top of my head. I have to go back to the schedule that we worked out.
And your assumption about the septic capacity, is that something that would have to be extended for this period of time?
No, the septic system could be evaluated within the next ninety days in terms of having a percolation test and a clearance by, by the Health Department. The staff has said there'd be a revised plot plan needed to show where that location would be, plus a expansionary for the leach fields, and, and that would be submitted to the city as well as the Health Department, and along with a percolation test, and they would review it and presumably approve it.
And, and where are you in reference to the road? What is it that you have a problem with regarding the road? What, what would you be willing to pave? Or is it that since the road is going to be subsequently tore up, you feel that gravel should be put in, in the interim as opposed to paved road?
We think there's an opportunity to get more through a cooperative effort between us and PAC-10 partners. And, and we, you know, as, as somebody who's been involved in this day after day, they, they haven't been necessarily the, the, they haven't ignored us, they ju, we just haven't had a, they just haven't sat down with us to, to review options like that, but, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a function of where the plans are in the process. And I, I'm sure Mr. Klein back there can, can speak to that, but I, you know, there's an opportunity for us to work together to result in, in streets that far exceed what the throwaway improvement is for the two-lane paved road. That's, that's our objection, is making the money go, go the furthest.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask a question of PAC-10 right now?
Yes, actually, do we have additional speakers?
I do. Mr. Klein is not, but if he wishes to speak and announces his name into the record, I can so note it.
But I will, I'll take the speakers in order.
Yes, sir.
Please present the next speaker.
Yes, sir. Bill Zimmerman.
Good evening, Council. I just want to make something clear. I heard Mr. Johnson tell you that a project does not have to be consistent with the future anticipated general plan, and that's a false statement. I want to make that clear, and I hope you understand that. I think he's misleading you, and he is an attorney who does this for a living. He knows better, and he's telling you something that's not true.
Excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman, you've been the chairman of the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
Does this city now have a general plan?
We use the RCIP currently, however, when you have-
Have we passed a general plan yet?
Let me finish. When you have a general plan that's in process and it has been delayed, which ours has, and you ask Office of Planning and Research to give you more time, which has happened, they have a new requirement that says any new project that comes to the Planning Commission or to you must be consistent with the future anticipated designation of, of the general plan. So it brings a question, when we, when, you know, I attended most of the GPAC meetings, there were seventeen of them, and I heard the discussion, and they were talking about what's going to happen in this area. As you're coming up the freeway and you enter the city of Menifee, there was a lot of discussion about having that be a corporate business park or some kind of professional office similar to what PAC-10 and the Commerce Point project is proposing. And the question is to you, is this project with scaffolds and rental things consistent with what is anticipated as a general plan? So I just want to make that very clear. You need to consider what that is. If I'm wrong, you can ask the attorney, ask the planner, but if you have a, if you've asked for an extension for your general plan, which we have, then all projects have to make a finding that it's consistent with the future anticipated general plan land use.
City Attorney?
Help me out here.
Are you City Attorney, please?
Excuse me. Mr. Zimmerman is entirely correct, and actually it applies specifically to new cities. It only applies in that context. There, there's a statute. It's Section 65360 of the Government Code, and it states that when a new city comes into being and you're in the process of developing your general plan, you have to make findings on approval that in fact say that this is going to be consistent, as far as you know, with the general plan and that it will not be inconsistent with it. So there are specific findings called out that must be made with regard to that future general plan.
Thank you.
Is he?
The only reason I came up here is because I heard an attorney come up here and tell you a lie, and I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay, well, so much for the lies, but, Mr. Zimmerman, I was trying to, when you said that it has to be consistent with some anticipated general plan-
Correct.
Because I've been on this council a number of years, and gosh, I keep hearing about a general plan, a general plan, a general plan, and staff just doesn't seem to be able to get their act together. But, you know, sorry about that, that's a fact. What, when you, when you mentioned that the, that the man should have to, to anticipate whatever, whenever our general plan is going to be finished, God knows when that's going to be, were you saying the type of business has, has to be considered?
Yes, that you basically are asking, is this project consistent with the designation on the anticipated general plan? Now, we have to ask what that is, and I believe it's mixed use is what's proposed for this, for this area.
So are you saying that, in, in your opinion, and you've formerly been the chair of the Planning Commission, as you perceive this phantom general plan that we haven't ever seemed to be able to get to yet, this kind of business might not be appropriate here?
That, that's for you to determine. So the question is, the vision is yours. What is appropriate for that area? And the discussion has happened at G-PAC, it's happened at Planning Commission, and it's been recommended to the city council. You being on that inaugural council should have seen the recommendations for the land use map for the general plan. Yeah, it hasn't come yet, but you, it is being worked on, and we are told that it's coming soon, so we hope there's no new delay.
I've been told it's coming soon for several years now.
Bottom line is, I, the only reason-
I'm going to call this discussion temporarily-
That's right. The only reason I'm here is to clarify what Mr. Johnson said.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman. We're not going to badger the speakers, all right? So I'm going to take control of this discussion a little bit better here. Mr. August, is there, do you have a question of any previous speaker before I call another speaker?
I, I just have a question, reading back through this-
Do you have a question of staff, or do you have a question of speaker?
Yeah, I have a question for whoever you want me to have a question for.
Well, if it's a question-
Who do you want me to have a question for?
If it's a question, excuse me, if it's a question for staff, we'll have additional questions of staff after we close the hearing. So if you don't, do you have a question for any of the previous speakers?
Well, I have, I have a question for one of the previous speakers, and then I'll have a question for staff.
Okay.
Thank you. We maybe, something that I, I was re, who am I speaking, who, who wants to take this? Mr. Leonard, do you want to step up here, please? In reading some of the, you know, voluminous material that we got provided from staff, and it was, believe me, it was voluminous, and it was incredible, and, and that's why I'm a little upset, I mean, a little upset that this thing's been going on for four years. But one thing I was reading in there, and Mr. Zimmerman just alluded to it, was that this land use element and zoning for this is going to be very similar to the RCIP. How he would know that, I don't know. I, I'm not sure. What, the question I have for you is if, what I was reading and, and what staff provided to me, that a septic tank is not going to be acceptable with the zoning code, light industrial, I think, is what it is, for that, for that area, for that land use. If that's the case, aren't we spinning our wheels here?
Actually, we do anticipate the sewer is ultimately extended to the site. The whole site is connected to sewer. Septic is an interim condition.
Okay, one, last question. I think in Phase One, you were required to stucco that building, is that not correct? That hasn't been done yet, right?
I just went through the list and saw that one of the next steps that would happen within the six months or shorter, we would hopefully get building plans from the, from the city. We'd go out to bid packages, not asking for permits, just building plans so we can get bid packages, send the bid packages out, get bids on the building and have that under construction, and that should occur within ninety days.
But what's supposed to occur for you, I think for you, within, up to 2012, prior to 2012, I think, August, right? That was Phase One?
Under the original conditions of approval-
Original plot plan.
I think it was six months allowed, then when it lapsed, and I think June of 2012, when we filed in November, that's the date that the staff used as the expiration point.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any additional questions? Mr. the Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
I believe we have a speaker who wishes to speak. Please identify yourself.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I was not intending to speak only unless called for tonight, being the representative of PAC-10 Partners. My name is Cassin Klein, I live in Murrieta. Some, some statements have made, been made tonight and have been written in, in the appeal that may pain us as being uncooperative. And in fact, Mr. Johnson said that, that Summit is the only business doing it right. I would beg to differ greatly, considering what Commerce Point has done and how far we've come and what we're continuing to do. Further, Mr. Leonard said that, that they wanted to sit down with us, and we haven't been uncooperative, but we haven't been cooperative. And that, in my estimation, is a misrepresentation of the facts. In fact, at one of the Planning Commission meetings that was continued, I came because Commerce Point had a condition of approval that we would be eligible for reimbursement for some of the infrastructure that we will be putting in, i.e. Sacadi. And that light condition was not conditioned on Summit. So I came to the Planning Commission hearing and read that into the record and asked for the Planning Commission to place that condition on Summit. We have a financial interest to, to work with these gentlemen. If they don't come in, we're building the road on our own, on our own dime. So please understand me very clearly. We have been cooperative, forthcoming, and will remain to be, both with Summit and with staff. At the conclusion of that Planning Commission meeting that was continued, Mr. Jonathan Smith in Carmen Cave scheduled a meeting between us almost immediately, I want to say within forty-eight hours, with my client, with my civil engineer, with Mr. Leonard, with George, I believe their civil engineer, and we sat right here and talked about a number of these issues. Along the way, Mr. Leonard has had email exchanges with Matt Harrell from one of the partners with PAC-10 Partners, as well as with me. So we have shared information. One of the things that they've asked for is our street improvement plans and our designs for Sacadi Road. We don't have those. We just started the design of Sacadi. We have Zider's Road plans, the Mile R's are ready to be signed, but we don't have those things. So it's not a matter of our choice that we are not sitting down and cooperating with them. So again, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, as you folks know me, I take a lot of pride in the work that we do in the community and in our project, and I take it somewhat personal when it is cast upon us that maybe we're not being forthcoming or cooperative. So that, and if it's my misperception, I apologize, but hearing what I've heard tonight, it sounds like we're the big guy on the block and we're not participating. And that is absolutely not true. If for no other reason, we have got a financial reason to participate, because we are eligible for reimbursement. I'm available for any other questions you might have.
Yes, Mr. Edgerton?
Would you, and I'm, I'm still, I just can't understand how, why this has gone on this long without a resolution. What part of the road would you anticipate that Commerce Point would be paving?
Okay, and I apologize to laugh, but now it's going to really make your head spin. On Commerce Point One, on the southeast corner, where the oak trees are-
Southeast corner?
Southeast corner, so down at the south end, against the freeway, you'll see some oak trees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That is jurisdictional, which means it's, it's governed by the Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Game. There are ephemeral, if I pronounced it correctly, streams that are tributary to that, that run across Commerce Point One and Commerce Point Two. The Nationwide Thirty-Nine permits all expired almost two years ago. So we had to go back through the permitting process to get our permits so that we can do work on the project. Now, how this ties into Sacadi, the minute you touch dirt or do anything to either one of those tributary streams triggers the conservation on that roughly two acres of area. So it's not as simple as coming in and doing a road design, or even absent a road design for an interim paved or an ultimate. It's not as simple as even coming in with a blade, laying down some DG and some gravel and saying, "Okay, here's your secondary access, have at it."
Okay, but assuming that some of those things had been resolved, was it anticipated that you were going to be paving part of Bailey Park and/or part of Jacadi?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We will, we will be paving, and we've, Commerce Point Two was conditioned to pave our half, half- We will be paving, and we've...Commerce Point Two was conditioned to pave our half width front, so across the street from Summit, and Commerce Point One would be paving the half of Sacotti of frontage. Commerce Point Two would be paving the other half width frontage of Sacotti. So, between the two projects, which we anticipate will move forward concurrently, we would be conditioned...we are conditioned, and we would build the ultimate improvement, absolutely.
So, wouldn't it...help me out here. Wouldn't it make more sense to put down, you know, a base in gravel, a temporary road right now until such time that both of you can put the final road in together?
That's where I go back to what I just described about the Nationwide 39 permit. We can't do anything until that permit's in place. And, Mr. Edgerton, we have been working on that since you folks, and you were on the council, approved our project in April of 2009.
Right.
I mean, literally, and this has been...there's a lot more, and you'll be...the City Council will be seeing more of it soon, because we're doing some things with staff that is going to require you folks to look at it. But there's not an easy fix. So, however, to answer your question again, yes, we are designing it, but even if the plans were approved and Mylars were signed, we still can't go in. They couldn't go in. The city could not even condemn it through eminent domain, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Biggs, without triggering the jurisdictional requirements because of the blue line streams or the tributaries of the blue line streams.
But this does not affect Summit's ability to pave?
Absolutely, it does. Because they can't pave our property and then turn...and trigger the requirement for the conservation area.
Well, how can we...it sounds like we're asking them to do something they can't do.
That's...that's not for me to opine, I don't believe, sir. I mean, when I came...when we bought this land, we knew the require...we knew what we were going to have to do. So, and that's a business decision that we made. If we...if it was, for whatever reason, if we knew we couldn't meet those development requirements, then we don't develop. So...
Any additional questions?
No.
Any additional speakers?
No, sir.
I'm going to close this public hearing at time 9:36. It's closed. The hearing is closed at time 9:36. Mr. Denver?
This is above our pay grade. I suggest, very strongly, that we kick this back to Planning Commission with the direction from the City Council saying, "Please try and work this out." And we're not telling them what to do. We're sure as heck not talking about details. We're not telling them they must...they can, you know, they...that they must fix it. We would like them to work on this further. We just want to kick it back to Planning Commission. I really make a recommendation, we do that if I can get a second on that.
So, before...okay, gentlemen, before we do that, I'd like to get a...from the City Attorney's perspective, we have a noticed hearing, and there are two resolutions that would need to be acted on. So, if the pleasure of the council were to be to not deny the plot plan, that would require a vote tonight. And so, that could kick in a mechanism for the appellate and the staff to enter into some additional discussions about the project, in theory.
You have the authority to uphold the Planning Commission determination and recommendation to deny the Planning Commission determination and recommendation, to modify it, if you choose to, or to return it to the Planning Commission, as has been suggested. You can take any of those actions. What has been presented is staff's recommendation, which is to uphold the determination of the Planning Commission and to deny the project. But you have those four choices.
All right. So, one of those four choices is to send it back to the Planning Commission for further review? Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this matter?
The point of order, we have a motion in a second.
Could you restate the motion, City Clerk?
Sorry.
I heard Councilmember Denver suggest that he would like this to be returned to Planning Commission for further consideration. Am I correct?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
And, Mr. Edgerton?
And I seconded it.
Okay, very well. That is the motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Yes.
Councilmember Denver.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
No. Onto the next item. We have discussion items 12.1 and 12.2, which have been pulled off agenda for consideration at a later date or a later venue. And so, we have Agenda Item 12.3, which is Ordinance Number 213-129, approving a statutory increase in the compensation for members of the City Council. Is there a staff report?
There is, as a matter of fact. It's before you. It's relatively simple. First of all, council compensation is set by statute, and it's in the Government Code, Section 36516. In a city under $75,000, the stipend is $500 a month. In a city larger than $75,000, it's $600 per month. The city was formed in 2008, and at that time, the population was under $75,000, and as a result, the compensation of council members was set at $500 a month. The Government Code 36516.5 allows increases in compensation at 5% annually. There is, however, a wonderful little provision that goes with that, that says that your salaries may not be increased during your term of office, that they may only be increased, in this case where you have a staggered body, after an election at which at least two members of the council have...or two council seats are up for election. But in order to do that, you have to adopt the increase before the election happens. Now, basically, since 2008, there has been no increase in the compensation. If you take 5% per year from 2008 to 2014, which is the earliest that any increase could take effect, that amounts to, as I recall, a 20% increase, which is $150 a month for council members. That is what it would be allowable at this point to be adopted in 2013, but not to take effect until after the election in 2014. The last wrinkle on this, and I think maybe I have another slide on it, yes. The last wrinkle on this is that the mayor's salary is not subject to increase under these ordinances, under these statutes. It is subject instead to Section 36516.1, which permits a higher salary to be awarded the mayor if he is elected at large and serves in that capacity. The initiative, however, that put that structure in place, set a deliberate and unchangeable figure of $8,000 per year for the mayor who is elected at large. And because that was adopted by the initiative process, it is not subject to the statutory increases and can only be changed by a vote of the people. So, any increase that happens will not give benefit to the mayor. So, there you have that.
That's why we get paid the big bucks.
That's why you get paid the big bucks. Basically, keeping the salaries of the City Council in line with what is permissible, given that these are very limited stipends, is the kind of thing that cities ordinarily do as a routine matter, and they do it in the off years rather than in the election years, so that it takes effect on a regular basis. When they...when you do it that way, it's 5% per year. It goes into effect. It takes a long time before this amounts to a huge salary for the work that gets done. But essentially, and I think I had it here, but did I show the...I'm sorry, I thought I had the fiscal impact. It amounts to $7,200 over the...$7,200 increase, I think it was, annually, until such time as is suggested. So, it's a limited cost.
Okay. Does that conclude your staff report?
I think it does.
Mr. Edgerton, you were up first.
Yes, the increase would not take effect until, you said, 2014.
That's correct.
In November, I suspect, November of 2014.
Well, it would be after the election.
Or December of 2014.
December, when the new individuals...
There were two elections in District One and District Three that occurred in November of 2012. Their next election would not be until 2016. However, if it is determined that there is an increase in November of 2014, does that affect only two council districts, or does it affect them all?
It affects them all. It merely takes the triggering event of an election, but the increase then applies to everyone.
Except the mayor.
Except the mayor.
Well, I would...I would need a disclosure here, because if I support this, it means that in the last two years, I'm going to get an increase of $100 a month, which is awesome.
Mr. Furman?
I think for most of the council, that would probably kick us up to about $3.25 an hour, I think, for what we...the time we spent.
To...Mr. Mayor, I just had one other question. And I don't want to digress from what is before us, but you did bring up the mayor. We have four-year terms for council people, but we don't have two-year terms for the mayor. When is it appropriate that...because this was voted on by the people. Full disclosure, I certainly have no interest in being the mayor. I've been...I've been there, done that. But for a mayor to serve two years means he or she has to get the job, and they serve about a year, and they're running for reelection again. It just seems inefficient to me. How would we get that back? Do we...we have to put it on the...for the voter again with the council on a separate motion, have to do that at some other time?
Yes.
Could we put that on a subsequent agenda item?
You can always put things on subsequent agendas.
Well, I guess, once this is...once we have voted on this, then I would be able to come back if I chose to put this on a subsequent agenda item as far as...
You can do it under the future agenda topics.
Okay.
And I do have a clarification. The number of the cost increase is not 7,200, it's 7,800. I have been corrected by the city manager, who is much better at math. You should never let a lawyer calculate anything.
Mr. August?
I said I wasn't going to vote in favor of this, although there are more than five people in the room. Let's see. Actually, I didn't want to stick...I really don't feel comfortable voting on this. I'm like Mr. Edgerton, my term is going to go to 2016 and not 2014. If I did, and I haven't even decided yet, if I do vote for this, would only be because probably something Mr. Denver agrees with, would only...may make the difference between somebody of a lesser socioeconomic background runs for office or not. If I do vote in favor of it tonight, I will decline the...I will decline increase from 2014 to 2016, if any of you are here and hold me to that, I do, you know. But I would not take it if I vote for it tonight. And the reason why I would vote for it is the people that follow me and not for me. But I haven't made up my mind yet, so...
Ms. Biggs?
Yes, just to clarify on that issue, even though this does affect potentially members of the council who will be in that interim period, it is not any kind of a conflict of interest or a financial interest that requires disqualification. This is what's called a term and condition of employment, and you are allowed, under all of the statutes, to participate in this decision. So, it's up to you as to what you want to do on that.
So, I just have a math question, sorry. We have term limits for council members of eight...two terms, which is eight years. So, the staff report and the ordinance...is it an ordinance? Yeah. As it's written, it ties the stipend increase to the Government Code, which goes by population, right?
It goes by population as to the base. However, it goes by the 5% per year.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. So, the five...I mean, I didn't know we were considering a 5% per year. I didn't...I kind of missed that one. But in theory, though, if somebody comes in to office in 2014 and they serve for eight years, if the population's at 80...call it 85,000, what have you, the stipend would be $600 in theory if it gets approved tonight. And so, for every year thereafter, that person would receive a 5% increase in the stipend?
No. The stipend is whatever the stipend is...first of all, if they're elected in 2014, they would get a base of 600, but the 150 takes everybody to 650 right now. If you approve this in 2014, the stipend will be 650.
Okay, I got you.
So, that covers that. The other thing is that when this happens, the payment to the...of the stipend is the same for every council member, except the mayor, of course, who gets nothing.
So, December 1, 2014 rolls around, the council members that are in place at the time will get 650 a month, and the mayor will still get 600 a month, because that's what the voters approve.
That's correct.
Don't run for mayor. There's no financial advantage. So, okay, thank you for answering and clarifying that, Mr. Denver.
I'm still confused on the 5%. Did I hear you say that in the year...two more years after that, is there an extra pay raise of 5% a year, or is it fixed at 600?
No, there could be, if you approve it prior to the election, taking effect after the election in 2016, an additional 10%, 5% for each year increase, if the council approves it.
5% every year thereafter?
If the council approves it, but it has to be done on a two-year basis.
I see.
And you can...and you can approve less than 5%.
And it's a decision that's made as we roll along? We're not making the decision today?
No.
Now I understand.
One last comment.
I don't want to...
One last comment. There is a population factor that continues in effect, but the jump from 75 is, I believe, to 100,000. It's not the difference from where you were before. And then after 100,000, it's like 250,000.
But we incorporated below 75,000, though. That's the issue.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on this matter? I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I will second, but I have to make a full disclosure. If this passes and there's an increase of $100 a month, I want everybody to know, Bill, you especially, that I intend to take that $100 and spend every dime of it.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
I understand the motion is to introduce Ordinance 2013-129, approving statutory increase in compensation for members of the council, and schedule a second reading and adoption, first meeting in August. Councilmember August.
No.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
No.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
What's in it for me?
All he's going to spend.
You got to ask.
He's going to take you out to dinner.
All right, aye.
Motion carries.
God, I can pay my mortgage.
Onto Agenda Item 12.4, Adopt Resolution Number 13-332, Designating Time and Date and Location for City Council Meetings and Designating Locations for Posting. Is there a brief staff report?
There is. At your meeting on July 2nd, the council directed that a resolution be prepared in accord with Section 2.04.010 of the Menifee Municipal... in accord with Section 2.04.010 of the Menifee Municipal Code, changing the meetings, meeting date for regular city council meetings from the first and third Tuesday of each month, month to the first and third Wednesdays. If adopted, this resolution will affect that change. And due to already scheduled public hearings, the change will take effect for the second meeting in August.
Which would be 21 August.
Yes.
For the benefit of Mr. Denver, what we, uh, what we were talking about at the July 2nd meeting was to, if we were to adopt this, it would, we would, we would relook at this again in December at our organizational meeting to assess the effectiveness of, of the change and then make a decision as to whether to move it back or keep it. And then, and we realized that it would take another resolution to continue, but at least that's, that was the rationale, was to do it till December and see how it goes. Mr. Denver?
Is there any way that, is this the appropriate time for me to ask for the summary of your reasons for wanting to do it?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Johnson, did you want to tackle that from the second, July 2nd meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to, to tackle that. There was a question regarding multiple weekend holidays that were coming up, Mondays and Fridays, and scheduling the meetings on Tuesday night meant that our offices were closed, and it happened, I think, three times in a row in the last three or four months, um, which, which backs up our staff report, slims our time down to get information out to the public, puts our clerk's office a, a little bit behind the, the coin to get these things done. If we, if we moved it to Wednesday to give them an extra day for, to get those, that information out to the public, and, um, it actually would give the public an extra day and council an extra day to review that information. So we wouldn't be moving the date from Tuesday to Wednesday and then moving the package, getting out to the public a day later. We'd be getting the package out at the same date. Um, there's another issue with a nine-eighty schedule. Staff doesn't work ten days in, uh, doesn't work on Monday through Friday schedule. It's Monday through Friday and then Monday through Thursday, um, working eighty hours in a pay period, but nine out of the ten days, um, which causes a little bit of an issue for us, when people are sick, people need to cover, and those issues.
Additionally, we did receive correspondence at the last meeting from the Chamber of Commerce, as an example. They were okay with the change, as long as we didn't make it the second Wednesday of the month to disrupt their, uh, their schedule, which, which is a valid argument.
Have we checked with other organizations in Menifee and other organizations around us and seen who, who we are following, jumping on with this change?
We're, we're not jumping on the Menifee Union School District, because they're, and we're not jumping on the Paris School District. It's on a different Wednesday, and we're not jumping on the EMWD, because their board meetings start at nine in the morning. And so with all that being said, um, that's the, is there any other discussion? Is there a motion for this resolution? Is there, is there a motion and a second? Roll call? Or do we need one on a resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I missed the second, I'm sorry.
Second was Mr. Furman.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. And just to confirm, so next, the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, August 6th, and the, this resolution takes effect on Wednesday, August 21st.
That is correct, and staff will begin the process of attempting to make that widely known as we can.
All right, on to 12.5, approve the use of twenty-three thousand dollars and some change from the city's general fund, fire safety assigned fund balance to the, to fund the budget increase in the same account in the fire department's expenditure budget for equipment purchases.
Moving.
Without a, okay, there's a motion?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Is there any speakers or anything?
No.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. Staff, 12.6, authorize staff to pursue an MOU with the county of Riverside for use of existing city Menifee fire facilities' development impact fees to assist in funding the replacement of Sun City Fire Station Number 7. Is there a brief report?
There is, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We, as you know, have some funds in our DIF that are set aside specifically for fire facilities and development. Uh, I believe the Sun City Fire Station and Battalion Chief just returned from a fire in Qual Valley that we have put out, can test, can testify to this. We've been searching for a new location for the Sun City Fire Station. There's some issues environmentally with the station itself. It wouldn't be moving out of Sun City, it would be relocating. We're looking in the area of Cherry Hills and Bradley area. Um, and we have about eight-hundred thousand dollars in our facilities fund. What we'd like to do is have direction to entertain an MOU with the county for those funds, so that, uh, land could be researched and purchased. It's already been identified. And then a brand-new facility would be built, and then we would get the keys to that brand-new facility. That would become a city facility, and, um, the county would then, CalFire would then be building a three-point, about three-point-one-million-dollar, uh, fire station in Sun City. Just looking for a direction to pursue that MOU, to move those funds and move forward.
Mr. Denver?
What happens to the old fire facility? Who ends up owning it?
Currently, uh, tho, that facility is under the county, and I believe they would, uh, on that facility itself, there's a lot of retrofits that would need to happen to use it for any other purpose. I think they're wanting, wishing to hold on to that one. I'll, I'll let the Battalion Chief speak to that, but all of the other fire stations would be conveyed to the city. Uh, we're hoping to do it at the same time the new one's built, but if, if, uh, Chief Rodriguez has a different opinion about that, he can share that with you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayors, members of the council. Mr. Johnson is correct. Uh, the county, through this DIF and, and MOU, would build a brand-new station, turn the keys over to the city, but in turn, they would keep the, the existing facilities over on where we have the station now. Eventually, they may deed it over, or they may convey it over to the city, but right now, the plan is, you get a new station, they keep the old building.
Did, did I hear you say that we're putting in eight-hundred thousand dollars, you're putting in three million dollars?
That is correct. You will get a brand-new fire station for eight-hundred thousand dollars, basically.
Now, if I recall, um, there was a press article about this, um, I think it was Menifee 24/7, and there was an option in there, or some discussion in there about demo, demolitioning, uh, Station 7 and creating that whole area, uh, for commercial development. So I, is there, is, or are you guys gonna, is the county gonna keep that building as it currently exists? Or would they sell it or demolish it, or what?
As far as I know, for the present time, they are planning on keeping the building. Like I said, there's some environmental issues, uh, in and around the area, underground. So I, I couldn't tell you what their plans are, other than for now, they would keep the building. Whether they bulldoze it or use it for some sort of county agency to come in there and use it as their offices, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, counsel, what is your pleasure on this, uh, MOU? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, this does not require a vote?
Yes, it does.
A roll, would you like a roll call vote?
I don't care, but it's a money matter.
That's a good point. Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
Actually, sir, just to be, so we're really clear, this is just for us to pursue the MOU that will be brought back to you, so that you could review it and approve it. We're not author, we're not asking for authorization to, to complete it.
This is just direction to staff?
Correct.
All right, any objection?
No.
So ordered. Okay, on to city attorney reports. Now, I'm going, as the chair, I'm going to ask you if you would like to present your ordinance review or if you would like to hold that for either the spec, the workshop, um, meeting?
The workshop would probably be a great idea.
Is that, is that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot there, and it's late.
Okay, if that's okay.
It's perfectly fine with me.
All right, do you have any additional city attorney report?
Uh, not at this time, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Just two items. Is there general consensus to hold off on the planned joint session for the planning commission and city council in light of, uh, us being without a, a planning commissioner? And if there is, uh, we can return with a, a, a date in the future. If there is not, we'll proceed with, uh, July 30th, I believe. That's what we were attempting to do.
I'll defer to Mr. August to make a comment about that first.
What's the next council meeting? August 6th.
August 6th. Next council meeting, August 6th.
Okay, I would, I'm probably not going to be selecting, um, a, a, a new planning commissioner prior to that date, so my recommendation would be, uh, move the joint meeting, uh, at least past the, the second.
Is there any objection? Okay. You need anything else, Mr. Johnson?
No, I do not, thank you.
All right.
Um, that's actually it for tonight.
Very good. Uh, on to future agenda requests from council members. Ms., Deputy Mayor?
I have some reservations about this. This, uh, this probably affects Scott Mann more than, um, anybody else, a request to extend this for four years. I have reservations, because it's 10 o'clock. Anytime I've run the meetings, I, I've gotten out of here at 8 o'clock.
It was all your questions in the hearing.
Incredible talk.
I, I would like to know what, what I should do or what we should do to get this on the, on the ballot, or what, what is the process to extend the mayor's role for, to four years?
Okay, we can bring that back to you.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we can bring that back.
Okay, so put this on a future, on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I, a second for that?
Yeah, you can second it, but could it be a ballot measure?
It has to be, yeah, it will be a ma, a ballot measure, but.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Denver?
Could we also, could we also, on that, consider getting rid of his cap on his, uh, salary and putting it more, uh, with the rest of us, and so that he can, so that position can benefit from the five percents or whatever the rest of the council gets?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be very easy to do, and just, I think the intention of the initiative was to pay the mayor a little bit more than everybody else was getting paid, but it didn't contain language that allowed that to continue to happen, so we can, we can.
The only other thing is, the, um, two terms, but I don't agree with the two terms anyway, so my, my position would be is we just leave that alone and see if we can get away with, at least he, at least the mayor's position doesn't have the term limits.
Okay.
Okay, um. I shouldn't have followed that.
In other words, if I, if you were gonna do, I, I'm, if making it just like us, you'd put term limits on the mayor, too. I, I don't agree with term limits, and so I wouldn't want to suggest, even for us. And so I wouldn't suggest that we put term limits on the mayor unless there's some reason, and I don't see that.
Is the mayor not now under term limits?
No.
No, right now, the mayor is elected every two years.
So twelve, fourteen years from now, if I decide to run for it, I can?
Yeah, yep, you can do that.
Yeah, but the stipend will have only increased by about a hundred bucks, so.
Well, no, there'll be no increase. That's not going to happen on my watch.
So are there any additional, uh, do, do you have any, do you have any que, uh, let me restate.
No, I.
Do you need any additional information from us on that?
No, I think that's fine. I think.
All right, and then are there any additional, uh, requests? You, you had asked for, during the discussion of, uh, resolution, excuse me, ordinance 1119. You already got it down? Okay, fantastic. Are there?
We'll come up with something, then we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, very well. Hearing no other.